All right, planning board, October 10th. We have a forum, we have a hearing. According to the Massachusetts Journal of Asics, Chapter 48, Section 11, notice is hereby given that the Bolton Planning Board will hold a continuation of a public hearing on Wednesday, October 10th, 2018 at 7:30 AM in the Board of Selecting Room, Town Hall 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass. To hear and act upon the applications of 21 Century Mill LLC, 291 Main Street, Suite 8, North Borough, Mass. 01532 for a backline lot special permit. A common driveway special permit for our property located at 21 Century Mill Road. Identified on Bolton's assessor's map, 3D as parcel 32, 12.8 acres, located in Bolton's residential zoning district, the proposed common driveway will provide access to four lots, Lot 1, Lot 2, and a backline lot. So tonight are we just talking about the backline lot?
Well, yeah. So, we, I'm Scott Hayes, fourth estate engineer.
Yeah, for the record.
Hi.
How good.
So, we had this common driveway planned for us last week, or two weeks ago. And this is what we discussed, basically kind of tabling the remaining land for the purpose of getting a backline lot special permit for Lot 1 and moving forward on that. So, we revised the plan, potentially just to eliminate the lots, drilling the area, drilling the frontage, then adding easement there, which is the driveway and utilities that currently run to 21 Century Mill. And we noted, not just the area, but the remaining frontage is on 1st and 2nd Avenue and Century Mill as well. So, that leaves about, just about eight acres with...
So, this line is exactly where it was before?
Yeah, it hasn't changed. I updated the continuous upland area calculation to exclude the rural front area. Technically a resource area, so still netted without any revision of the lot lines, so just got a little closer. So, we would like to continue the common driveway hearing, at least one more meeting. To develop this strategy moving forward, I, you know, it looks like they're really pushing the weight for springing out there, so...
Maybe conservation...
I'm on the Conservation Commission, to investigate those pools, so I don't know that we're gonna have a meeting or a resolution with them until we get through that process, so...
Yeah, and you got your 50 feet for frontage?
And then we would just withdraw that application without prejudice, that would be the intent.
Yep, yep.
I'm Brian, I'm on the Conservation Commission. We never said anything about waiting till spring, nothing was said about waiting till spring.
Okay.
We have questions, it's, you know, it's an ongoing meeting, but never has anybody said anything about waiting till spring, so I don't know, I don't like being quoted like that.
Okay.
I think the question of the vernal pools, though, has to wait till spring, that was our understanding.
It could very well, yes.
What's gonna determine that?
Uh, we could do a vernal pool study to see if they are actual vernal pools, but according to the town bylaws, if they're suspected vernal pools, we're subject to meet the 25-foot no-touch. That's kind of where that stands right now, I mean, that's a different commission, I really can't speak for the commission. The only reason I spoke up right then is nobody ever said, "You're gonna have to wait till spring," that was never told to anybody in a meeting, nor suggested.
Well, it's just the bridge option with respect to vernal pools, the breeding, well, the breeding time of year for a vernal pool would be in the springtime, so that's why that was...
Yeah.
The consensus thought with everyone, it wasn't, anyone said anything.
And so you have an upcoming meeting with ConCom?
Uh, there was a meeting last week, and I don't know how much progress was made there, Scott, Scott Goddard...
Yeah, so Scott Goddard, Wettland consultant. The question about the springtime, I think that was, that was the email that Rebecca sent to Erica, that was the last meeting here. Those were Rebecca's exact words, those weren't words, weren't put in anybody's book.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, with respect to the meeting with the Conservation Commission and the chairman is here, he could speak to that, but, you know, basically we just postponed discussion, you know, not much progress was made at that meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, my, you know, whether it's spring or not, my thought was that it didn't make sense to plow forward with the common driveway, you know, those vernal pools were in question, and, you know, we're still looking at the footprint of the Lot 3 house, so what we have in front of us now, I'm perfectly happy with, and when things get settled out with Conservation Committee, whether they're suspected or not, you know, we'll wait for that, you know, we'll respect that committee and wait for them to make whatever determination they need to, and then we'll move forward from there, you know, so I'm fine with continuing the hearing after this and just...
Do we need to close the hearing, though, in order to accept?
Correct, you need to close the hearing for the backline lot, and then vote on, if we're gonna vote, if the board's gonna vote to agree on that one.
Just for the backline lot?
Just for backline, then you will continue the hearing, if that's...
For the cross道s or...
Well, currently as part of the property, it's pretty far away. It's a, it's a pretty impressive shed, though. I think they're gonna, they're gonna move it around to accommodate, either bring it over here or keep it on the lots, but it's well-built, it was, you know, framed by hand.
What was the deal with the garage again? I know you guys don't own that, or the land, but...
What's, what, specifically, what do you mean by the deal?
Tiny little non-conforming...
Yeah, it's just, it's a piece that was cut out at some point, I don't know when, it just, it looks like they did the layout of 38 vodka around the building there. They wanted to kind of have a conforming width and it would've gone through the building, so, I don't know when that occurred. It's an old building.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's been there, they grew up in town, it's been there, all I can remember.
Yeah, well, okay.
I was just gonna ask, has your board ever gone out for a site visit up to this area?
Um, we haven't had a scheduled site visit with the entire group, but I know that a couple members have gone.
I've been out a few times, yeah.
All right, and, 'cause the only thing that I would question to a certain extent is we go off to the FEMA maps for floodplains, but most of that area is floodplain, and there's a lot of parts that don't show up on the FEMA maps that are functioning as floodplain. I know, you're kind of gonna go by the FEMA, but I would say it's...
Well, no, we were actually concerned about that as well, 'cause, I mean, we saw the residence video.
Yep.
That looked like, you know, we couldn't tell exactly where it was from, but we know that it's potentially wetter than the maps show.
Right.
Yeah.
But there's certain areas on that map that they say aren't wet, that we generally think are, that are being proposed for the, basically the recoup of lost floodplain, so we're basically taking what's functioning as existing floodplain, saying, "Well, it's not technically floodplain, so we're gonna create that to make new floodplain," but we're not doing anything for health and safety. In other words, we're taking something that's by the eye test currently functioning as floodplain and saying, "That's gonna be our new floodplain." Well, it already is a floodplain, not on the FEMA maps, but then you run into health and safety issues where we know we're filming in floodplain.
Well, these are like all the questions that, you know, we had on mind, and that's why we were hesitant to move forward with the common driveway, you know.
But, clear, if you're on the floodplain, and there's base flood elevation determined by FEMA, it was determined by survey on this plan, so whether that's an arbitrary elevation, you know, that's established by FEMA, and that's the base flood, so that is the floodplain for, you know...
For all regulatory purposes, that's...
For regulatory purposes. It doesn't mean it won't flood more than that, it just means that that's the regulatory floodplain, yeah.
And any compensation has to be done based on that elevation.
Correct, yeah, and, you know, and again, this was all done by field survey, you know, because the area is so kind of gently rolling, I mean, the areas that are out of the floodzone are only out by a foot, or half a foot, or three quarters of a foot, so...
Uh, two things, Mr. Chairman, one is a comment about that little cinder block building in the corner, that's been pretty much in constant use since I've lived here. It used to be, I don't know if it's a workshop, but it was certainly a storage area for Lloyd's Woodworking, which is now still in Hudson, near River Street, and they do customized work, church pews and old things that most carpenters don't do. So, they were there before the electrician. My question was Martha Remington, Main Street, is this still being considered for four lots?
So, right now...
And is so, why so?
Well, so, right now, we're just looking at the backline lot, so the house that's currently there, they're, you know, they're gonna divide that out into a backline lot from the rest of all the other lands, so what was the three other houses is now just one big lot two, and this, we're not looking at the common driveway or any of the houses.
What's being in front of us is two lots, it's just to create the backline lot.
Oh, okay, so it has changed, and before the existing house was something that...
Well, the existing house encompassed the whole parcel.
So, this is just to create a backline lot for existing, so...
Yeah, yeah, and at some point in the future, they may come back with...
Additional lots.
So, it's being expanded landwise, is just, is what you're saying?
No.
Or re-subdivided some of...
Re-subdived.
So that the lots will be differently configured?
I assume what the owner wants to do is wants to be able to potentially maybe sell this house and hold on to the other land, you know, pretty much. They're just dividing what was, they're just dividing what was one lot into two lots.
So, where lots two, three, and four were, were all over here, so there's the potential they could come back and still do that, but what's before us tonight is just to create the backline lot for Lot 1.
Oh, so the Lot 1 was always the original house?
Yes.
Yeah, it was all one big lot.
I didn't realize that, I thought this was gonna be four brand-new houses stuck between...
No, it was always three plus the...
Okay, thank you very much. Does your map show, is there historic railroad bed on any of this land?
It shows it, yep. The old railroad grid.
Yeah.
Right here.
Okay, and I would presume that that is not going to be disturbed with a buffer zone?
Well, a buffer zone wouldn't disturb it.
No, but I mean, would like at least five feet on each side of it?
I mean, it's part of the existing Lot 1 with the existing house.
Right.
So, then, you know...
Right, so nothing would be, no earth construction would be near that.
No, there's no other house, there's a house there already.
Oh, okay, great, so it would not be disturbed?
Yeah, it's located entirely on Lot 1, which has the existing house.
All right, great.
We have no control over what that...
So, in actuality, this has always been three new houses?
Yes.
Yes.
Boy, am I dumb.
No.
Thank you.
Well, it's obviously presented as a four-house subdivision.
But one of them was existing.
But one of them was existing.
Okay.
That's where, that's where it's...
Thank you very much, yes, thank you so much.
This is all in the commission files.
So, yeah.
Richard Davis, 185 Hudson Road. Have you gentlemen seen the photographs that I took of the excavation?
Yep.
Not the, not the...
Around the vernal pools, right?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying?
I wouldn't say around the vernal pools, I would say on the vernal pools.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, does one need permission in town to do that kind of excavation ahead of time?
That's a question for ConCom.
I just...
Maybe Brian can answer?
Yes, you would, yeah, and there's a 25-foot no-touch for any vernal pools or suspected vernal pools in town.
But as of right now, it's not officially a vernal pool?
No, even suspected, it's a 25-foot no-touch, according to the town bylaws, not mass production.
So...
And is that something that a wetland specialist should know?
Well, I think they're doing this, they'll do the study in the spring or potentially to confirm it.
But the excavation was done two years ago. Wouldn't that seriously disturb the vernal pool and the kind of life that would be in the vernal pool if it was disturbed to this degree? I mean, machinery was in there, it was completely rigged out.
I mean, I can't speak to what it was two years ago.
I mean, that's not really what we're under question right now, so, I mean, right now before us is the plan to just back the backline lot. We're not doing the common driveway, there's not any houses in that area, so I don't, you know, we're not debating what was done for that land right now.
So, I mean, what's the purpose of doing this?
Uh, well, they wanted to divide out the land. They have the right to divide their land.
This house is for sale right now, can I imagine it's pending this?
'Cause it's all one big lot right now.
No, I understand, but, I mean, I guess my bigger point is, are we kind of setting a bad precedent here by, you know, allowing this second lot to be divided, knowing that, you know, there's, there's so many potential issues, you know, that...
It's, well, A&R stands for pretty much approval, not required, people can divide their land up as long as it meets the bylaws, you know, this...
But that doesn't mean that it's, that we would approve building on it.
So, whatever, so whatever they come in for Lot 2, I mean, we'll look at that when that resurfaces again, but what they're showing right now is meeting...
Yeah, there's no presumption that the lot is even buildable at all, you know, wetlands, floodplain, et cetera, other things can, in fact, whether a lot's buildable, all that the planning board is really evaluating in this case is whether it conforms to zoning, it's a legal lot, by the dimension requirements, so... We still don't know that we could build one house there at this point, really.
Yeah, I mean, if they came back, let's certify.
Yeah, right.
And everything, you could, you could get one house.
So, why isn't this submitted as an A&R plan?
It is. What's a backline special?
Because this doesn't have the...
Because it doesn't matter, you can keep the 200 feet frontage along here, so it's a backline lot, we're part of this.
Yeah, and so, if, you know, for backline lot, you need to have a special permit.
Well, and it's...
So, that's what this, we'll get there.
Yeah, so we filed for approval lot required application, a backline lot special permit and a common driveway special permit, and right now...
We're not doing the common driveway.
Right now, we're, yeah, we're basically tabled in the common driveway application, at least for a few days. So, let that play out a bit, and then...
All right. Last question on this one.
Mr. Chairman, might the record in the minutes show that two years ago, for some reason, on this lot, which has a lot of wetlands, apparently they didn't go to ConCom and they were digging up things, and they may have disturbed a vernal pool, because I think it's up to the people who own the land to know that if there's a vernal pool on it, whether it's registered or not, it should be considered sacrosanct until at least Conservation Commission is consulted?
Brian, I don't know, like, how does, how do you...
How do you talk that after the fact and...
When was it even suggested to be a potential?
But even so, like...
When we, last time I went out on a site visit, you know, to even accept it, we'd take the eye test, and then there was definitely frog activity, actually witnessed frog activity.
But that was this year, correct?
That was this year, that was...
So, before this year, it was not known that it was open?
It was always suspected by people who had been back there.
Okay.
People, you know, there is one certified vernal pool back there, there's a few that have been checked and certified, it's just this one hasn't been. And it's not to say it's definitely a vernal pool, it just shows a lot of the characteristics.
What does the Conservation Committee do if somebody digs up a vernal pool?
Uh, we'd probably find him and make him put it back to its original condition. I will say, there's no, that I'm aware of, Rebecca might have received something that I'm not aware of, but I'm not aware of any formal complaint about that or any action that we're taking about that. We have been out on site visits, so we have kind of noted what's going on out there, but again, I don't know when that was coming out, I can't say who, when.
So, your question's pretty much for the Conservation Committee, the planning board, you know, we'll, when we're doing a common driveway, we'll look at that potentially in the lots where houses being built, but this is just a lot where nothing's being built, so, I mean, if somebody's messing with the vernal pool, it would be Conservation Committee.
And these were on the plans from the beginning, Mr. Chairman? Were the vernal pools noted on the original plans when they first came to planning board with this project, proposed project?
I don't think so.
Because they shouldn't have been shown on those plans.
I don't think they were.
They could have been shown.
All right, so let's, can we close the hearing on the backline?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
On the backline, you're the station's backline lot.
That's the only one that's open, right?
Well, continue the hearing on the common driveway.
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion to continue the hearing on the common driveway for, let's see, interesting.
When do you want the next meeting?
21 Century Mill.
The 24th, yes.
The 24th, is that...
Yeah, that's fine.
October 24th.
October 24th.
Seven thirty.
And, oh, wait, 7:30? Current. At 7:30.
Second. All in favor?
I... I make a motion to close the hearing on the backline lot for lots 1 and 2, or is it just Lot 1? Just Lot 1?
Uh, second. All in favor?
I... And now do I make a motion to approve this?
Well, so, there's any other comments on it, so we have before us the, just the decision for Lot 1. Lot 1, 2 are listed. Specific plans, uh... Anything special or different in this, anything else?
Yeah.
No. Just the 50 feet, got the site line, all documentation is in order.
Should we have a copy of the strike easement? Driving utilities in language?
Well, that's John on the plan.
That's...
Yeah.
Oh, easement, Sean.
Oh, yeah, the easement's John on the plan, so that'll, that'll be...
There's not a comment on that, just something, these are what we needed, unless that one was set.
Yeah, but it is all on here, so...
Okay, okay. So, want to make a motion to...
I make a motion to approve the plan of land for Century Mill Road and Hudson Road in Bolton, Massachusetts, dated May 25th, and revised October 8th, 2018.
Uh, do you...
Oh.
What are you reading?
I was reading this.
Yeah, Hudson Road 85 and so on, it's...
Yeah.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
I...
Erica, how many prints do you need with my law?
I need a minimum of two, if you can, if you can.
Four?
Blue is fine? Blue pen is fine?
That's fine for the decision.
I'm sorry. Starting. The sidewalk is still in check. This is why they stopped covering us blind.
Those mountains.
Yeah. It's by the uncovered board, so we're looking at inspection reports.
I'm gonna get good ratings there.
No. Pause it down time. Fast forward this floor.
Yeah. I wish I got the time channel, I'd love to, like, DVR that, you know.
It's on the YouTube channel.
It's on the YouTube channel?
I don't think I've ever had it on TV, Mike.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Will this now still be even on YouTube?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's just not live.
No, yeah, gotcha. And no audience?
Um, no audience faces, no.
Yeah. It's on the camera.
Will this now still be even on YouTube?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's just not live.
No, yeah, gotcha. And no audience?
Um, no audience faces, no.
Yeah. It's on the camera.
Here's the tiny, uh, level.
Yeah, can I take one of the pets? I think they have them.
Yeah.
Back down, or...
Yeah, that's fine.
I have a show for something, yeah.
Sure.
See, the planning board's signed off on that. Hell, no. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Fred, Century Mill. Excuse me, sorry, Fred. I'm here for an update on the cul-de-sac. I know that...
I emailed one, but it doesn't come, so...
For the audience, we got a revised, well, I guess, probably not a revised plan, but we, a revised idea.
Of doing the lot, or phase 2, sorry.
We're, we're tired of, sorry, am I interrupting?
No, it's good.
We've tried every avenue, not getting anywhere. We know the residence won.
Completion.
So, called Erica with the off idea that maybe we could use the two cul-de-sacs as turnaround points and stop the approval on the plan where cider circle...
Oh, okay, so we get to see this on this?
Even though we have road here, which the HOA would take care of, their plan, but it's, for lack of a better word, it's a last-ditch effort to try and get something done. I can't guarantee I can get it done this year at this point, because although today was nice and warm, it is not gonna continue, and I have yet to get people on schedule, because we've been trying to work with the owners in Phase 3 and haven't moved forward at all recently. So, this is our way of trying to appease everybody, and...
And curling it up to that other lot wasn't gonna work either.
Uh, Brandon wasn't 100% sure it would work. Definitely, the owner that owned that lot that we're gonna curl it up to, and he owned a lot across the street from it, a lot across the street was exactly one acre, wouldn't that conforming?
No, that's why we were wondering if you could kind of come in and bring it all the way up.
Brandon's not sure it's gonna be a road fence or a little bit of a crisis, so it was an idea that I were moving from, an idea to try and get it done.
I think this is a great option, it at least does, what, 80% of it?
Yeah, I mean, it's maybe 300 feet of road, but you gotta circle and green right there.
Yeah.
Wish the HOA could take care of it, it's not a big deal.
So, there'd be like six remaining houses in the HOA?
There would be... Five.
Five, yep.
Five.
Okay.
That cost would be, I mean, I'm not part of the HOA, but it would be split amongst the entire homeowners, so it should not just the five people.
The plowing you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, that's our largest cost of the HOA fee, which is what the residents are most concerned about.
Well, once it's a public, once it's a public road, the town would just plow the public part, right?
Right, correct.
But you're saying they would split around and then make these houses pay the full cost?
It would be part of the...
Yeah, 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 I see.
So, they'd be helping them out?
That has anything to do with you guys, but I was just explaining how that would...
Yeah, no, that's, well, that would be nice.
So, what do you need, there's nothing to do done tonight, you're just letting us, so you're gonna try to get this...
I always ask ConCom to inform you guys about it, I see you are on board with it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we are.
I think that's a great idea.
DPW, I believe Erica spoke with DPW today?
DPW's on board, they like the idea.
DPW's on board, okay.
Awesome, I've reached out to fire, and they're gonna get back to me tomorrow, and I still need to touch base with Don Lo, because I assume we're slack, and we'll want to go up this as well, so...
So, like I said, there's still multiple people I've contacted, and we're literally a month away from shutdown day, I'm paving, and it's...
Well, that's only if the temperatures go up, I mean, go down, so...
I don't believe that's been the policy in the past.
Well, yeah, it's, remember, we have to, like, grant the commission...
After, yeah, after November 15th, you have to...
It's a vast, vast...
It's like a request.
It is a request, and I actually have detailed, a detailed...
I don't believe that's been the policy in the past.
Well, yeah, it's, remember, we have to like grant the permission.
Yeah, after November fifteenth, you have to...
It's a vast, vast...
It's like a request.
It is a request, and I actually have detailed, I detailed email from DPW on the paving schedule. I figured this would come up, so when we get to the point where we talk about any extensions, I'll have that email for you.
Okay, so what's the direction?
So I just came to...
So what's the, I mean, so you have the berms?
The berms, we still need to agree on once can you replace.
The berms, the binder that needs to be replaced? Driveways need to be repaired?
Yep. Now, the grinding and micro milling was this green face, so it's really the only...
Second hole?
Repair is from Century Mill about halfway, approximately halfway up the first set of catch bases up the road. Um, it's a cup honor fee, that is actual repli, cutting out replacement of binder. Um, and then the berm falls on aesthetics. Uh, it, it serves as function, there are places missing binder where it's been torn out or we had, you know, patchwork, you need done handwork in certain areas of body granite structures, but that is all subjective, but up to you guys.
So do you, um, should we set a date to go back out there and know about last one didn't end up happening?
We, we started like then.
The berm would happen last, right after the road is paved?
Last after before the top of the... So we have to do whatever berm work we're doing, structure raising, all of that must be done before we top over.
When are you gonna know if you can, if you can get this done by this year?
I can't even, I had contracts drawn months ago. Everybody signed off on it, it was good, everybody agreed to the, the thing, except maybe partial bond release and release stuff is another issue, but as far as getting the work scheduled, I was in good shape a month ago. I don't know. Everybody's super busy right now. Had it on the books six weeks ago, wouldn't have been an issue, but because of the owners, lot three, three weren't, or phase three weren't cooperating, it's, uh, made it hard.
I'm just thinking, we don't need to go on sidewalk unless...
Unless you get fired, a sign off, and the board is selected, and by the time that happens, I don't know what the timeframe is on something like that. You know.
So DP, uh, Joe pretty much said, replace them all, right? So he said...
Well, no, I think...
No, what did he say?
That was his comment.
That was his comment.
His initial comment was replace them all, but he also said, propose to us what you think should be...
I'm fine with, you know, spot selecting based on...
Well, then let's say, cool, we can see what...
I think that, that's the...
That was the, the point that went up, going out, yeah.
Correct.
I, I think we should probably just see it so we can have it written down.
We should, yeah.
We should do it before our next, we should do it before our next meeting.
Fred's already seen it all.
Okay.
He and I spent an entire day going through the site.
Well, then, are you two both on an agreement of, on the same page for what needs to be done?
What it is, we're understanding what he is, his opinion is.
But are you, but are you willing, I guess, to, I guess concede what he's recommending?
For the moment, I guess.
Okay, 'cause I would say, at that point, where you and Fred are on the same page?
Then we don't need to...
We don't need to see that, we need to go over that.
We just...
I would just say, where there's an area where maybe you and Fred are still in somewhat disagreement, then we can look at that. But if you and Fred are on the same page?
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
I mean, Andy was there for the whole meeting, so he, you know, knows what Fred...
Yeah, 'cause if, if...
And Andy on the same page.
He's willing to go along with it.
With Fred's assessment? Then we're fine, we don't need to...
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if you and Fred are, are good?
Yeah, the other question was the trees, but...
Ultimately, Joe has to sign off on it also.
I think we'd like to see the planning board. A diagram showing where you're planning on replacing.
I even marked out all over the place, there's also some discussion about street trees because of the...
Yeah, that was one thing I wanted to see, 'cause I'm, I'm not necessarily thrilled with using street trees that are like twenty feet away.
So, like, it won't take long?
That's fine, yeah.
We'll, we'll make it quick.
As long as it's not downpouring.
Yeah, let's not do that again.
Rather not have a site visit.
Yeah, not tomorrow morning. Yeah.
That's true.
The, the first, most important thing is to make sure that you have board of selection and fire on board, otherwise it's wasting all your time.
Well, I can't imagine either of those two not being on.
Right.
I mean, all we're doing is we're reducing the amount of road that you would potentially put in for the...
How does fire service, that's the one question I have, if they're not willing to go.
Well, how do they serve them now?
They do, I mean, they do, they have to.
So, and it's not part of the approved road, so it's no, no change.
And school buses go there too.
It's no change, so I don't see...
Right, I mean, the school buses have been coming there for years.
Yeah, so I would think...
I, I would say, is there any precedent for doing this? Is there any other road that we accepted?
Partial, partial acceptance.
I mean, I guess, in theory, we were gonna partially accept this road anyway, 'cause that would have continued and been the same road. So it's not a whole lot different.
Right.
It's just a little bit smaller than what we were originally thinking.
Not by much.
Yeah, not by much, yeah, exactly.
It's three lots on one side and two on another, so...
When, when will you potentially hear from the fire, the fire and board selection?
Tomorrow.
Oh, great.
I mean, I don't know that I, for the entire board selection, it's a way and it would have to be at a meeting or something, but I think if I talk to Don and maybe one of the board members just to get a feel for what their thoughts are, I think that would be sufficient for this.
'Cause what I don't wanna have happen is the same discussion we had months ago is go spend quarter million dollars, let's say, for round numbers, whatever it may be, and then have them say, no, we're not gonna accept it 'cause it's not a whole phase, even though they said they would accept it in phases, and now it's gonna sit there and get beat up for...
I don't see that really happening considering everyone's already gone through, and I think we're all under the under, I think everyone wants it to...
I'm just posing that as a concern on our end.
So, so this section, section green, you're not doing any, any finished work on?
No. And there's already a half the cul-de-sac there.
Yeah, yeah.
That they would be able to...
'Cause that's how they kinda get it, yeah.
But at some point, you're gonna have to bring equipment back in to finish that, or that, this will wait until...
We have access from over here to bring equipment down.
So you can bring it that way?
Okay, so, so, okay, so it all, so...
So you don't have to bring heavy equipment or...
We don't have to bring heavy equipment back through that way. All our lots are graded, hydro-seated, stabilized, we're, we're finished with house site work. There's a couple lots that haven't been built on, but it's not like people until, until it grows anyways. It won't be yesterday.
So, berm wise, we're just gonna go with Fred unless there's some major contention between you guys and Fred?
I don't feel there's any major contention.
And tree wise, if we need to, if we need to do some site visit or something for...
Do you need us to do the site visit for the trees somewhere along the...
I would appreciate it.
Should we, unless like we should do it right now?
If any of you feel, and get used to it, I don't have to come, but if somebody here feels strongly about it, I would like your...
Yeah, I mean, we probably only need one or two of us there.
I'd like to be there.
Okay, yeah.
I have that, so...
Erica, you got the check you need?
Did you get the check?
She does not, she needs the check, she doesn't, no.
Okay.
No, she does not. I'm waiting on closing, that was supposed to happen a week ago, so it's in the works.
And it sounded like, uh, bond release wise, that, you know, you'd get a chunk of it. There'd be some percentage tied to making it through the winter, but...
Yep.
But it's not like it would be, so you'd have some money there, so it sounds like windows open for you to just plow ahead and see what you can, if you can get it.
Tony, call us tomorrow, I'm not gonna be promises this late in the season, I can't. Um, but if we can get this agreed to and do it in the spring, at least we're all on the same page and we can move forward if we don't have any further action from the people in phase three, at least we're moving forward together to try and...
Right, yep. Okay.
That's all I got.
All right?
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
See ya.
Have a good night.
Good night.
See you later.
All right. Next up, Keith Farm, talk about Saturday construction hours.
Thanks.
So we got, so we got a few letters from residents.
And I'm here to speak about it too.
Yep. So we got one from Wendy, one from Sherman Klein, and one from Michael Orsari, just saying that the Saturday construction time is a nuisance. Overall, there are...
Trisha Fushuk is also emailed. Trisha Fushuk is also emailed. There's people, Charles emailed multiple times, but there's others that emailed prior and also.
I think these are just the most recent ones that we...
Other ones?
These are the most recent ones.
'Cause we had received ones previous.
So, uh, so how many total are there, five?
Uh, I have to go back and count, but there's five or six.
Okay. Um... We're talking about Saturdays from now to the tenth of November, so three or, what, three or four more Saturdays?
Four.
I think, four more Saturdays. Um, we have some people have noise complaints. The alternative is that you don't get the work done and the noise goes to next year. All right, and so...
I think the first questions are, you, you think you're gonna make the November fifteenth?
Is it possible that you can make November fifteenth?
Yeah.
Is it possible that you can make it without the Saturdays?
No, absolutely not. Okay, and, I guess I, I, I just asked the question. Okay, you realize we have all these letters, okay, which particular Saturdays are they talking about?
I think they're talking about all of the Saturdays, yeah, it could be you.
Well, I'd like to ask which particular Saturday they're talking about.
Did the noise complaint occur?
Yeah. I think the earlier ones were when the tree work was being done.
Not these last one.
So you had the earlier ones, which, which was a different, different piece of construction than the road work that's going on now?
I, I, okay.
I think what I'm looking at here is they're just saying the noise on Saturdays is a nuisance, so...
But I, but I, I would like to ask which Saturdays?
They're saying Saturdays.
They want specific.
They want specific.
They're just saying Saturdays.
I guess I'd ask you...
Every Saturday. I was looking up on Monday, the holiday, remember we talked last time? At seven AM, on the holiday.
But what I'm asking you is which Saturdays are you complaining about?
I didn't keep tracks.
Well, more than one?
Absolutely.
So, more than two?
Yeah.
So, let's not, let's not talk to us, no.
There's a reason that I'm asking.
Just really speaking point.
There's, we haven't worked a Saturday at all, okay, since the first Saturday in August.
Why do you need the Saturdays moving forward if you haven't worked?
Okay, because we've been rained out almost every single one. Michael was there, okay, came, okay, came, came by, okay, to look, okay, and was disappointed we weren't working Saturday. I'm gonna say this just the way it is, she's very disingenuous, okay? We haven't worked a Saturday. That's the point.
Well, you can't, you can't say you have worked a Saturday, 'cause you have worked some. Which, which Saturdays have you worked?
The first one that was before Labor Day.
Okay.
I understand what you're asking.
Since the last meeting...
Could you just get your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Wendy Kelly, I'm the resident and board member. Since our last meeting two weeks ago, he has not worked. The, the Saturday after, it was quiet, I think I emailed you, I said, and I was appreciative about that.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay, that was you, thank you. And then last, everywhere, we talked last time about him not working the three-day weekend, which he didn't work Saturday, he, but he worked Monday on Columbus.
Yeah, so, I, I talked to Erica, actually, I, I think there was a misunderstanding, 'cause Erica said it wasn't a national holiday.
Federal holiday.
It wasn't, but it turns out it was, it was kind of the town's mistake, I guess.
So, so, and, and it was my recollection that we talked about it, and I asked specifically, okay? You know, we're gonna work Monday, but we're not gonna work Saturday, and everybody said yes.
That wasn't discussed at all.
That wasn't discussed, no. We, we said no...
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, we were only talking Saturdays, that was the only thing on the table.
We kinda just assumed that if it was a national holiday, that there wouldn't be work, and then I think you asked, you clarified with Erica if it was, and she might have said that it wasn't.
Yeah, I apologize, I take full responsibility.
No, no, and she was great, okay, and, and, and everybody makes a statement.
But so you ended up working it?
I mean, my day is that sort of a mute point, 'cause honestly, I'm sorry, that was, that was my fault.
We actually got a phone call from the police department and stopped working.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but, but I'm telling you, okay? We haven't worked a Saturday, and if all these people are complaining, it's not true.
Well, they might be talking about past Saturdays.
Well, well, I realize that you're in a tough position.
They're just talking about the noise in general, and the theory of working on Saturdays.
Well, that's fine, okay, but e- even if you looked at this and said, if it was complained because the noise was too much on Saturday, okay? Then we would re, then we would address it. What's the sense in coming to a meeting and getting opposed, okay? If, if next week, when nothing's changed, okay, that there's another book, okay, another, another issue?
So, this, this was what I sent to Eric and Erica. We have approved Saturday construction for a limited number of Saturdays. The board doesn't have a clear policy on when Saturday, on why we allow Saturday construction, but it's up to the whim of the board. We voted to approve it, um, and as far as somewhere, there's been no egregious noise violations. Nothing has been done, um, on a Saturday to revoke the privilege. So, I don't think that we should be reconsidering this. We voted to approve it.
Well, can I... Excuse me, what is an egregious noise?
Hold on.
'Cause I'd like a definition of that.
So I think the only thing I wanna add to that is when we agreed to it, we said, though, we would reconsider it if we received information from the butters.
But, so then the question is, how many noise complaints? Is it a percentage of people that complains? I mean, in general, in general, in general, this is, the board needs to come up with better guidelines about Saturday construction. I think, I think that's something that the board needs to do. In the meantime, we have granted the developer permissions to work on a set number of Saturdays, and they plan for that. Unless he does something that looks egregious to, to make us reconsider that, I don't see why we're reconsidering it.
So, I mean, so I'll get to him in a minute, so, um, we start with the base of no Saturdays, and then we allow Saturdays if we wanna... So it's not like it's just free rain on Saturdays, then we allow so many Saturdays, as you were saying?
Yep.
To like get a job done, or...
And I think that's the important thing, is we had a set goal in mind of getting the road completed before November fifteenth. That, that's the goal. It's not like this was, they asked for Saturdays for the entire development. In the springtime, we're probably not gonna allow Saturdays.
Right, can do inside house work, but they can't...
Sure, sure, but there was a set goal for, for why we approved Saturday construction. And nothing has changed to...
I, I kinda disagree with that, just because I, I feel that the, um, when we first looked at this and we first voted on it, there was no representation from the butters. And I know that there was a notice that went out and, and stuff like that, but I think part of us talking about that and putting that potential stipulation in here was we didn't know what the effect would be on the butters, and, um, we, I feel like if we heard from them and we heard complaints, we would reassess that. That, at least that's how I was reading it.
So, I, I agree with it, but again, what does that mean to, I mean, how many peoples it takes to complain before we stop?
Well, we, we...
Well, or, 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 or do we, do we act on a complaint or on the perception that there will be noise on the work that they're currently doing and address it?
I mean, yeah, there will be, there will be construction notice, it's a construction site.
I guess the question is, is it tolerable or not?
Yeah.
Well, to some people tolerant, nothing would be tolerable.
Yeah. And that's subjective, it's subjective.
And other people have a very high tolerance for it. So, it, it, it is very subjective.
Yes. Can I ask you, um, what happens, um, if, if there are no Saturdays? What does it do with your construction schedule? What is that, um...
If, if you keep getting rained out on Saturdays?
It, well, you can see what's happening, okay? I, okay, I mean, this is an extraordinary year.
I know, we're in a lot of...
Okay, and, and, and it's affecting lots sites, okay? We're right up against it, we have restrictive hours, we're losing, we're losing daylight, okay? Um, you know, we, we complied, I came in here early on in August, and I requested this, okay? Since August, we've only been able to work one Saturday, okay? I think this is, you know, okay, and again, I, 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 I don't wanna... I, I, I wanna be direct, but I don't wanna be derogatory, okay? I, 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 I'm telling you that, that there has been no work on Saturdays, except for one time in August, which that meeting is when you voted, okay? Okay, that was great. Do you realize this will be the third vote, okay, on the same thing?
No, we, we haven't voted, we've voted twice.
I mean, we start from...
If we, if we choose to take it...
If we, we start from the base of the, the no Saturdays, um, and then we ask residents, you know, it's kind of, you know, we ask if this will be a hindrance or not. So kinda along what you were saying, you know, and if residents think it's gonna be a hindrance, you know, that's why we add, that's why we added this to the rules and regs to no Saturdays is because, you know, we didn't wanna bother people on the weekends. So I don't think it's necessarily, well, we haven't bothered them yet, it's, we don't, you know, whether we're gonna allow it in the future or not.
Um, I, I agree, I'd like to know what percentage, what defines a butter. There's one house that's right next to the site that no one resides, so you're not gonna hear one of them.
Well, we do have a definition for what an butter is, it's five hundred foot radius, uh, five hundred foot...
For a subdivision, correct.
For a subdivision.
I really appreciate you receiving that. I really appreciate you saying that.
That's it, yeah, that's it. I think the definition in our, in the subdivision.
And that would be, what, would you say twenty residents, twenty houses?
I don't know the exact number, but it's, you can sort of talk to the map how many abutters there are.
This is it here?
And I can tell how many I've talked to, and I can give you a little information on why you haven't heard from some of these people. Every person I've spoken to, actually, on that lane has said, oh, the town planners, don't bother. So your credibility is really quite low, so there's a learned helplessness of the people. Excuse me. I'll speak when everybody's paying attention.
I'm listening, yeah.
So there's been a learned helplessness? I mean, I say, oh, I'm bringing up the town planners, like, good luck. So I'm really calling on you guys to reestablish your credibility with the residents of this town.
Well, I mean, you kind of throw us under the bus. I mean, we haven't, if we haven't, like, you know, it's different people all the time. He's been here for a year, and you've been here for two years, so to say that is like...
I appreciate you coming and giving us the information that you can.
Because I can tell you how far back into the subdivision people are hearing that noise and how much of them are experiencing noise pollution. It's further than I suspected, actually, down with the furthest lane, the thirty to forties. They can hear it down there.
But that noise is gonna happen regardless, right? And if it's not on Saturday...
Saturdays are a privilege, and we all work with time management. We all know what rains. This is not, you know...
There is a town-imposed deadline about when the developer can pave the road, though. And so that is the reason why the board granted Saturday permission.
And so he has fifty-five hours a week already that he's working. That's more than the rest of us work, and we all have to manage our time.
I don't remember that.
For your sake.
I have registered residency in Fisher's American School. I know what it means to work overnight. I've worked thirty-six hours and forty-eight.
Having Saturdays gives him flexibility if he gets rained out during the week. There's a day that they can make that up. Because it's up against an imposed deadline from the town when he can pave, that's why we took the vote we did.
So residents in other towns were shocked that construction was happening in residential area in Fulton, and even more so that it was against the residents.
Residents in other towns shocked that we're not able to work Saturdays?
Yeah, I will say there are other towns that allow Saturday works and stuff like that, so. It's, but in this town, it's not granted. It has to be asked for, and we have to grant.
And I appreciate that our town has that.
Which I think I did.
You did, yes, yes.
And that's why I believe it's incumbent on the board to go and revisit that and put really clear guidelines.
I think it's a great idea.
So we don't have these discussions. In the meantime, we've approved a limited number of Saturdays. You're probably gonna get rained out again this Saturday, from what it looks like. So, I mean, I don't see why we change anything at this point.
I mean, when we're developing in a residential district, I think we should favor the abutters' concerns surrounding, not necessarily the developer. And, you know, I favored it last time because we had one complaint, but, you know, now we have four or five. And I don't think it's necessarily if it was a concern, it's if it will be, you know, an issue, based on how we wrote that up, so.
I think a hundred percent what you're saying is we need to reissue this and make it more clear so we don't have a square area in the future, because I think it's frustrating for the abutters, I think it's frustrating for the developer, it's, you know, frustrating for us, and so that is something we will try to address. But I think, given what we talked about from the beginning, you know, I've heard from enough of abutters what they're concerned, I would not wanna continue granting Saturday works.
I guess I would ask, okay, this five hundred foot abutter rule, how many people are actually within five hundred feet that are complaining?
Well, that's, well, so we have five people that have complained?
Yeah, but are they within five hundred feet?
I don't have addresses on here.
Well, so there is, there should be in the plans. You have an abutters sheet in the plans, don't you, or somewhere?
I can go get it. I mean, I have the abutters list from...
And again, I guess my...
So at this point, if they're outside that five hundred and they're still experiencing the noise pollution, do they not have a right to say that this is fine?
They have a right to.
The point is...
They have a right to say, yeah. Just the five hundred feet gets to notify, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, anyone...
Anybody can put their special permit. Well, it's not a special permit.
But the point of this is, and I guess nobody's hearing me, we haven't worked any Saturdays. For them to be complaining about Saturdays, okay, is, like I said...
I think we've established they're not complaining about Saturdays. They're just complaining about the construction noise in general.
But, okay, so...
I understand.
And potential for the next month, they would have it on Saturday.
I need four more weeks, like I was initially done. I've made contracts, okay, with, okay, with the...
Do you GC the job?
No, no. Do I GC the job?
Yeah.
I GC the job, okay, and I...
I have no idea what that means.
Don't point that at yourself.
I'm the general, okay? I've got a road...
Keep on the acronym.
Right.
No, no, it's our...
He's responsible for the entire road.
Right, right, right. Well, if you can't use, I think, front back there.
Why wasn't it brought to the board last time when we met about not working any Saturdays? Supposed we had, you know, what Saturday have...
No, I've been asking to work. We've been rained out every Saturday, every Saturday.
Right, there was one Saturday early on where we were being treated.
Right, that I remember, but in that last time...
We got some complaints after that.
On that one Saturday, on multiple Saturdays?
But he says he hasn't worked any other Saturdays since then, so...
Zero. And again, I mean, I'm...
So if you were to not have the Saturdays, how long, how much longer would, I mean...
Oh, it's another week. Okay, I'm up against this now.
Well, with, I mean, with the weather coming, you know, winter coming into it, how much longer we... How much longer is the noise pollution gonna happen if you don't get Saturday? If you don't get Saturdays, are we talking two weeks, three weeks?
There's a certain, there's a certain amount of time, okay, and I think everybody would agree that if you're working during the summertime, you can work faster.
You have longer days, yeah, or days, yes.
Not even longer days. There's no frost in the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
People work better, okay, because they're warmer, okay, it's a fact. It's not my opinion. That's a fact. So days going into the winter, okay, even if it was during the winter, okay, they would be, there would be more hours consumed, okay, and more hours of pollution.
So would you say that if you were to work, if granted the next, the Saturdays, four Saturdays equal, if you don't get the next four Saturdays, you get three more weeks of construction?
Perhaps.
I mean, can I just...
Is that, is that...
I don't believe four Saturdays equals three, is what three fifteen is.
So in the past, so we stuffed along on Century Mill from working on Saturdays. I know, and they had like an instance where a resident or something had to do some work on one Saturday. They came and asked, you know, for that particular Saturday, like a specific day, we have to work this Saturday, or they were moving in or something. I forget what it was.
They had multiple violations.
They had multiple, and that was also a lot of rock crushing things.
But I guess where I was going with this is, you know, between Keys and Tadmore and other subdivisions potentially, and Forty Bs, you know, everybody's gonna be working on Saturdays, so I think I'd rather just draw a hard line on the same and say, no Saturdays unless... Maybe there's one specific thing just to wrap some work up. You know, there's gonna be a lot of development in town residential zones. You know, we should be favoring the residents, not necessarily the developers of the subdivisions.
And then I'm gonna rebut that, okay, just by saying, I came in here early.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying.
I talked about it.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry for the confusion.
No, no, it's not confusion, okay? I made my deal with, okay, with my road contractor, okay, early on. I think it's, I don't think it's fair of this board, okay, especially when we haven't been able to work a Saturday. I just don't think it's fair.
Okay, so can I just comment on that and the fact that, we talked about it when you came in early, early. We specifically said, if we hear back from the residents, we're gonna readdress this, we're gonna reassess this.
But this is the third time.
No, and I get, but the first two Saturdays that we granted, no one said anything. So we granted two Saturdays, you worked, I think, one of them, and you said we only could work one of them. You came back, and that's when you asked to do Saturdays all the way from September to whatever November is, and then, you know...
That was on the twelfth of September. Nobody came in that night.
So I'm just saying, we've heard...
No, no, we had a letter. No, we had a letter, and you were here and you couldn't stay.
At least one other.
So we didn't get everything until after the twelfth of September. So now we've heard from enough abutters. That makes me concerned about the fact that we've got another whole month of potential Saturdays that, I don't know if they'll be rainy or sunny or whatever, but that they don't want the noise on those Saturdays. So that revisits our original conversation that we had. I appreciate the fact that you have a contract, you're trying to get it done. I mean, there's other things we can talk about. I know that November fifteenth is a hard deadline, but we were just talking about if the weather is cooperative, if we could let, you know, and I know that there's specific requirements from the DPW and all that type of stuff, so that needs to be met. But there is some potential flexibility there. It's all weather dependent. But I guess my whole stance is, you know, we've heard from multiple abutters now, so I think it's...
So I think there's nothing, you know, saying that...
I think this was supposed to be spoken for.
I agree with Mike. I mean, we need, as a board, to develop better guidelines on this. But we did grant it. He's put, you know, he's planned on having them, whether or not the weather cooperates. And I don't wanna minimize the abutters' concerns, but I have a hard time acting on the perception that there's going to be noise and it's gonna be disruptive. I've lived next to construction sites, and it's a nuisance, but it's not...
And we're dealing with it during the week, but honestly...
And in fairness, we haven't heard from anybody other than Danforth, or we haven't heard from any of the other abutters on it.
I was not told. I can get them, you know, I...
But that's wishy...
Erica notified the abutters.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not up to you to notify the abutters.
If, do we have a motion on this? Somebody wanna make a motion on the board?
Motion of what?
To not allow...
I'll make a motion to stop Saturday work for the, until we send November twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Three to two, no Saturdays.
I just don't think that's fair, okay, at all, and especially...
As I said, you know, we said, we put this guideline in there to not have Saturdays and to allow a Saturday here and there. We said if there was no abutters, then fine, you can work it, but there's clearly some abutters that are against it. It's not a ton, but we have a lot of subdivisions going into town. There's more coming to town. They're all in, they're all in, you know, residential zones. So if we start allowing you for a month or two to work on it, they're gonna be like, well, we can't work for a month or two. It just puts us in, I think it's just better just to not allow it.
What is the sense in coming in the last meeting and getting approval and then coming back, okay? Okay, okay, and let me ask the question, should I have been notified, okay, and writing instead, okay? So, I mean, is this even...
You should presume that there's no Saturdays allowed and, you know...
But that's why I came in, Eric, okay? Okay, I mean, it's just, it's just not right.
Yeah.
Okay, and again, okay, I just...
I understand where you're coming from, and I'm sorry there's confusion. I think, like Mike said, we'll make clearer guidelines moving forward.
Okay, so while I'm here, I'd like to work this Saturday, then. Okay, I'd like to, okay, work this Saturday. I've already got work lined up.
Yeah, I have work lined up.
Right. Because you're taking something away you already gave.
Well, we did say it, as Daniel said.
I think we gave it with a stipulation, though, that if we were to hear from the abutters, we would reconsider it. That's my stance, and we've heard from the abutters.
But you heard from the abutters on something that didn't occur. Okay, I guess I'm asking formally, okay, at least let me work this Saturday.
I just don't wanna allow it.
Motion was made.
Huh?
The motion was made.
So, I mean, so the motion was made to not allow it to November tenth. I mean, he's asking for a specific Saturday.
But the motion was made to allow it to November tenth, so, you know, I mean, so I'm asking for a specific Saturday.
You don't have, like, I mean, so you're saying your work, how does construction people, I mean, is people lined up? I mean, he's not, doesn't have like a down payment on these people or, you know...
No, when you do schedule, I mean, I can understand his point. You do schedule people out. I mean, yeah, it's at least two, three weeks out, easy. What are they doing?
Working. I don't know, but, but, okay, they pay overtime.
What have you done for the past Saturdays that you haven't worked at all?
That gets rid of that.
Well, you haven't done anything.
I know.
Okay, because they couldn't get in there. Okay, it's too money. Okay, that's...
I mean, tomorrow's gonna be torrential downpours.
But Friday is gonna be a nice day, and Saturday's a nice day. Okay, just need some wind, okay? Wind dries it right up.
I think we just got under here.
Can I ask respectfully for a vote on it?
Yes, yes, somebody can make a motion. I mean, what do the residents think about having one particular Saturday, though, you know? We're talking about one Saturday, you know, moving forward. We're not talking about four or five. We're talking about one. It's, you know...
Allow them to finish up this Saturday, because they're scheduled work and the weather.
I mean, it was, you know, you know, I can see that, you know, it's not quite fair allowing it to slow, allowing it to slow on it. Do this Saturday, and we'll be done with it, you know? If you have work lined up, fine, we'll get that done. I would be agreeable to that, just, but this would be the last Saturday.
So I definitely hear the desperation in his voice, and I understand that things have changed since the beginning. Again, it is a privilege, and the noise is the noise, and we hear that on those days. We have our, you know, we have our time management, and he knew he has the weekdays. The Saturday's all along the road privilege.
So, I mean, it appears that I'm the swing vote here. So I understand that we kind of screwed you over a little bit here, because if you had work over or not. So, you know, we said no work for the tenth.
I'm not mad.
But I will make a motion to allow this particular, I can make a motion, can I?
I think so. As the chair, really? I think we could.
I can make a motion.
Okay. No, 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 I just didn't think, I didn't think the chair...
I will make a motion to allow Saturday, October thirteenth, construction on Saturday, October thirteenth, makes this far.
Is there any discussion, so, on that motion? Oh, can we have a second first?
I did, I did.
So I see that, you know, I feel like I'm so wishy-washy here. It's ridiculous, but...
Yeah, you are.
I feel like, you know, I feel like we did screw you over a little bit, and it'd be in Wednesday and Saturday, so...
So, I mean, he's...
I mean, we've had all the discussion.
I know, and he's so much, I feel like I keep getting cut off when he gets to interrupt.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is a male-female thing or...
So, you've been worried?
No, no. I'm gonna say board and not board, pretty much. I mean, that's how it works, you know? The board talks first, and I ask the audience. It's just, otherwise, people are just shouting and screaming at each other. You want one final statement on this?
Yeah, I can recall what I was gonna say. Again, this is a precedent. I really like your thinking into the future. You know, he's had rains out Saturdays, where he's had people, I assume, ready to work, so this is something he deals with, you know, tomorrow. This isn't something new.
Yeah. So I think what we're saying is we're gonna work, we're gonna probably set a harder restriction on Saturdays than we've set not Saturdays in the future. But seeing how we were, it's such a last-minute canceling his work, you know? I think, you know, personally, well, I don't wanna say how I'm gonna vote, but... Does anybody else have any other words? All right, all in favor of working this specific Saturday, the thirteen? Aye. Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so you can work this Saturday if you're ready to, yeah. I'm the most wishy-washy person on the... Yeah, I feel bad that if you did have work on that, though.
It's too late now, but he worked Monday?
Yeah, well, we discussed that.
We already talked about that.
I know.
It was our fault.
It's a forty percent chance it rains, so...
You have a forty percent chance of no work.
The default tends to be him working.
Okay, well, it's this weekend, and it's none after that, unless there's a specific vote, and I'm not putting it back on the agenda, I'm not for sure. a specific vote, and I'm not putting it back on the agenda, you know, for sure.
I appreciate 10,000 to let the residents know.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was a mess. The rest of these could be easier. All right. You don't want to work on Saturdays, right?
You don't cause no one to think we're working.
First one is Green Road on behalf of Nick Zaka, and basically all it is, is a lot line modification.
So do we have, I know Erica had to be less, it's in here. That was it. Exactly where this is, assessors now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the cornfield, Harvard Road's over here, Green Road heads down, this is...
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
Which one's his cornfield? The three block one? That's good.
I think it's just that one there.
Okay.
Actually, no, it's that one, I think.
Yeah, it's that one. This is woods.
It's a lot there, I think that.
That's the, that's the house?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a wooded lot right now, or?
Nope, these are all house lots, and essentially it's his children or family that live in most of these houses, but they control them.
Okay.
All they're looking to do is to revert the lot line back to where it was on previous
I was gonna say, how old's this plan?
Yeah, it's applied to the plan.
It's no, he was...
He wanted to go back to this original lot line, so what we did is, basically, just add parcel A to restore it. The only thing that's changed, obviously, in the bylaw since this plan was done, which we had to explain to them, is the lot irregularity by law. So in order to do that, we just had to shorten up the perimeter a little bit, so essentially we're going back to this, but it's just got a right little triangle there. And then this parcel...
Cut off a little corner to make it more regular?
Yes.
How does that make it more regular?
Yes, 'cause, you know, I think we've done this in the past where it's 0.5, it's gotta be just over, so it's 0.5 through 2. So parcel A is gonna come back to this parcel F1.
That's it, okay.
That's it.
What does that do?
I'm not really sure what it does, but essentially what...
So why are we doing it now, just to make it conform more?
Basically to grab, it conformed before. He wanted to basically come back to what was on this original plan.
Okay.
So what I explained is we can't go all the way back because of the lot irregularity, but essentially it's close enough.
Gotcha, okay.
But what's the point of doing it?
I, quite honestly, I think it's estate planning, so I think this, this lot is going to his daughter Kelly here, so that just gives her a little bit more land there.
How much?
It's a lot, 70.
74 hundred square feet. Okay.
So they own, they own this landlocked lot?
Yes, yeah.
Any plans for that, or nothing to speak on yet? Hmm?
No. No.
Not that he's tested for yet.
Is there, is there something on there?
No.
No.
89?
Not on this lot. There's a house on this, a house on this, a house on this, yeah.
Any issue against this, Erica?
No.
Okay, your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan of land. I can't, sorry, where was it?
323, 323 Green Road.
323 Green Road.
Uh, second. On paper?
Aye.
Can you get this signed? Or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's completely stuck at the back of the 3rd West Street. Well, it's all part of, I guess, estate planning, right?
Like, does it belong to the same family? All of those do.
What about the weather being, huh?
That's different.
Oh, that's different. Different families. Oh, well, the last meeting, we did the 61A for some Zaka land, right?
So it's called Zaka's property, different property.
Yeah, yeah. It's the one in between Old Harvard and Harvard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's next brother, that's, he has the cornfield there, yeah.
I'm just saying, is there a coincidence why they both come out at the same time?
No.
No?
No. That's Harvard.
Okay. No Mylar for this?
There is.
There is at the bottom.
I guess what you're saying, there's nothing that this parcel does that changes the buildability of any of this property.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was asking, but, I mean, it's not that it would change approval, I'm just wondering if you have any plans.
I think a lot has to do with when this plan was done, it's hard to say on this plan, but obviously, there's a house right here, and yards, and kind of everybody's yard encroaches,
What happened to their corn this year?
I don't know.
I don't know. We usually step up there, so they can stop watering or something. Just three? Playing one eleven?
Three eleven. Are we playing you on Saturday?
Yeah, yeah, there's the whole thing of whether they were gonna do the A and B, and... Yeah. I wasn't against it.
It seemed like a lot of extra work.
Yeah, I mean, it made sense, I guess, 'cause stepping up to the minors and stepping up to 12, but, but I know that Connor was like, oh, but I wanted to play with my team, so I could see that point of it.
It's confusing enough with their uniforms.
So are we playing you again?
I think so.
He skipped you one, one week, it seems, now we'll make it up for it.
Yeah.
He's gonna push that, what's it, Ruggio?
Rujia, yeah.
Yeah. Don't throw him against us.
I could...
I have a hard time hitting up him.
He's so little, he throws so hard.
He's eight-year-old, he's winging it.
Yeah. And he just, he just throws strikes, like...
Yeah.
It's like Purcello, like fire strikes.
Just like Kimball blessed me.
That's the rest of our team, that's...
Sliders into the dirt all night.
Hitting people.
Yeah. Oh, that was awful. Think I lost a year of my life. Okay. All right. All right, so next up is the Weatherby Family Erroccable Trust, recent 4000. So this is creating two lot lines?
Yes. Essentially, this is an A and R, I just kind of wanted to, maybe you asked about kind of history of this piece, because it's a little unique in the way that we work with the town and the conservation trust, the conservation structure. 374 St. Harvard Avenue, it's all controlled by my family, this is my grandparents', this is my parents'. And it was back in 2011, when they were looking at doing some of the farm, we looked at potentially developing this, obviously. A five-house lot stood.
So is this Bowers Spring Land, or?
Uh, this is, this is Laven, and then, you know, you come down Flaming, and, yeah, that field is kind of right here, and it goes down on the back. It was gonna be a five-lot subdivision with a common driveway that kind of came through here. My grandparents worked, well, both, and my parents worked with the Conservation Trust and the Bolton Conservation Commission, specifically Carol Gumbard, to do a conservation restriction, where the commission ended up getting grant money from the state, and all went to town meeting everything to essentially purchase the development rights. And part of that deal, when that went through, was we withheld the ability to create one, the potential for one additional lot, and it was specific where this lot ended up. So essentially, this is Old Harvard Road here, the old farm road, kind of went in the back, there's a couple barns on the property here. The things that they were, the interests of the CR was basically, obviously, they were most concerned about this area in the back, because they wanted to buffer it to the nature camp, the conservation land. So they want any homes in here, and the second thing was the vistas, you know, as you kind of come down this country road, you're getting farmland, historic house. So essentially, there's a pond here, there's some trees in here, so obviously, we set up a non-restricted area over on this 1.7 acres over here. Now, when we did that, we created an access utility easement off of an existing, this is a shared driveway now, that kind of comes down through here, to allow future access, obviously, because there's a pond here, so this, this lot, when created, which we're doing now, will be accessed through this same access and utility easement here. There's two conservation restrictions that were done. One was called the Dusharm Land, which was what was controlled here, and this was Weatherby.
This one, sure is.
So it's two separate restrictions, but obviously tied, this is the same plan, it's not for both of them. So at this point, this lot has since been sold and purchased by somebody else, and now, essentially, this lot is kind of subdivided and sold as well. So this A and R plan that we have before tonight essentially does that, and what we've done is two traditional lots. We've obviously got excess of 200 feet of frontage on both of these lots here. We'll start with Lot 1, which is basically what is the majority of the land here, kind of comes in the back, we've got a lot of irregularity, and it's 11.3 acre lot, it kind of comes around the back here, and then we've got Lot 2, which is a 3.1 three-acre lot, which will incorporate, it's obviously got the house, the barn, and kind of this, this field that's immediately behind the existing farmhouse. The other thing that was worked into when, when we were basically dividing this all up is the owner of this house, which also has his restriction, had an interest in the barns, and as you kind of come down the existing row here, it kind of looks like a lot of this land goes with his lot, so what they would like to do is purchase this, which is parcel B, it's 1.27 acres of restricted land, that essentially, what's gonna have, have to happen is both of these conservation restrictions are gonna have to be updated, obviously, with the new lot areas, land areas. This parcel B will be added to that conservation restriction on this piece, and the balance of it will be incorporated into this piece.
I thought the area in yellow was the conservation restriction.
Yeah.
So this doesn't have a conservation restriction?
It does, yeah, so it actually, well, drawn, that's just on this piece, because it's two, right? So this, this line here is the limit of that, so, and you'll see, this is, there's 3.95 acres.
Oh, so, so this is restricted?
Correct.
Here, okay, all right.
So one of the things Erica pointed out today when we were talking is, is there was a clause in the CR that prohibited a subdivision, but the intent was always, and there was, there's a letter that was provided, to cover as well for the attorney and the, where obviously, the idea was always to cover this lot. And the other thing is, I mean, essentially, the reason for that stipulation was to prevent somebody from, let's just say, a major land, to be able to subdivide off a chunk of this in order to be able to give them more buildability. Essentially, what they're trying to do is lock down the development around there as well. So where essentially the attorneys are looking at this, where, where basically, it is two separate CRs, but it's all in the same, the same quote-unquote piece, that really, when they redraft that parcel B, will be in there, which is the intent of...
Yeah, they're still...
So this, this line here isn't a lot line, it's the conservation restriction line?
Yeah.
So we just need to do an A and R to create a lot line along conservation restriction line?
Yeah, for the most part, it, it comes in where we could...
No, you just need to revise the conservation restriction.
No, we can't revise conservation restriction.
No, but you're...
There'll be another plan that basically will redefine the restriction with the new lot lines.
It doesn't have to follow the A and R?
No.
Right, yeah.
No, well, but, I mean, what he's requesting is that we have a lot line. Where's the...
No, so, so basically, what these areas define are just where they can build.
Yeah.
So the, the lot lines actually just follow more of your zoning requirements, so, you know, basically, we're coming up, we're grabbing the frontage, and then essentially, there's a stone wall here, so a lot of this yard goes with it, so we kind of went along the stone wall, and then we kind of grabbed a piece here.
So this is 200-foot, 200-foot frontage?
Yes, yeah.
But no, it goes across this whole lot, this is all...
Oh, it's the whole thing?
26 feet, it comes up in the back.
Oh, it's the whole thing, okay.
But that's, this is the only building part.
Yeah, that's the only part that's got under, under restriction, yeah. Well, okay, so, so this is the new lot line?
Correct.
Which is currently not there?
Right.
Yeah, okay, got it. And then also, you're looking to flip that parcel to...
Essentially, because this was the non-restricted area, we were grabbing, come, come along that restriction area, and then we kind of followed along this existing easement, just to kind of make it a little cleaner.
So is this a part of all Lot 1?
No, this is separate, this is 58.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's not, well, yeah. So Lot 1 is turning into 1 and 2?
Lot 1 is just Lot 1, it's this 11.3. Lot 2 is this...
But what is it currently?
Yeah, what is it today?
Oh, right now, it's, this is, this is the lot line, yeah, so it's that one.
It's all Lot 1s.
Got it, it's one, one going into two lots.
And then this is, you know, separate owners, so...
But they're gonna sell this portion here.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Erica, have you checked with town council to make sure that we can do that, or?
No, I, actually, that might be a, a good option, because I'm, I'm still a little big...
I mean, conceptually, I think the land is all still protected, and it's meeting what seems to be the restrictions that were there, so I don't, conceptually, I don't have a problem here, I just want to make sure that, I mean, the town council can read this, and, you know, you get two, two lawyers in a room, and you'll get four opinions, so, I just want to make sure that they don't, that they're not gonna, you know...
Well, I guess the, the conservation restriction will need to be updated.
It, it's gonna need to be updated, but the question is whether it would prevent, you know, like, this flipping here, or the, you know, you know, changing the lot line here. It shouldn't, I mean, you know, and conceptually, it's all still protected.
Right, exactly.
But you, you deal with it from lawyers, you know?
I do, I do.
And the intention was, is probably, it's still all protected, so the intention, I think, is being met, it's just, you know, how they have to finagle the, the language to, to allow it, or, or whatever.
It comes down like this, goes like this, goes over, and then down like that. That's the division between Lot 1 and 2?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Also, I, I do understand that, also, one of the things of this is, is, and I know it's not a problem, but, you know, it's driven by closing, which is supposed to happen. How long do you think it would take town council to weigh on that, and is that something where, you know, maybe tonight we can endorse the plan, but not at least the plan until we get verification of that?
I think, I think we could probably approve it conditionally. Does, does it have the 20-day waiting period on it?
Okay, wait, no. Now, technically, the board...
I'd, I'd be comfortable with approving it conditionally, and then, you know, unless town council has any issues with...
What's, is the issue this part, this part?
Well, that's what my question is.
He just wants to know.
So, 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 if, if you're not, if you don't change the, the lot line here, if, if this remains the lot line for, for this house, then we're not subdividing, we're not doing any, anything that would be, that would trigger the, that could be of concern? So I think the only concern is whether this can, this piece can be moved over to this house?
Yeah, that's my biggest concern, that we're meeting that requirement, the conservation restriction about subdivision of the restricted area. I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into any...
Yeah.
Can we add it as a condition?
Hey, I don't see any problem with that.
So we can approve it with condition that town council reviews it and is good?
If something were wrong with not letting that happen, the rest of it can still happen?
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like...
It's not exactly what people want, but...
Yeah, we just have to figure that out, and let's just say, you know, worst-case scenario, if that couldn't happen, then yeah, that would have to be removed, and basically it's going to change, you know, one of these lots, just, let's just say Lot 2 would have to be...
In large, would be better.
In large.
Well, I mean, as it's drawn.
As we would just go, the issue is that, because we've got two different...
Conservation restrictions.
Well, two different restrictions, but also two different offers or closings, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
That would have to be modified, so it's not, it's not clean.
What's not clean, but we...
If town council weighs and says that there's an issue, but I guess we'd want to know that.
We'd want to know that, yeah.
I would think the people that are buying it would want to know that. Yeah, so we should approve, or, you know, vote on it with the condition that town council approves the...
And then you have to go to the conservation commission to get the, read the restriction that you've written, or how does that work?
Yeah, so basically, well, the attorneys will draw up the new plans, and then will amend the conservation documents.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan of land for, what is it, 374 Old Tubman Road, dated October 4th, 2018. Contingent upon town council's approval.
One second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Never had to ask, I'll oppose it up till tonight.
Divisional board.
It does happen very often, but...
Do we sign these tonight while this pie is...
That's the wishy-washy swing of it.
It's completely gray, and it's wishy-washy, and I feel for anyone right now.
Exactly, yeah.
But not on the split of what we're purchasing?
Correct. Yeah, no, no, so essentially, sorry, these are buyers for the farmhouse, so essentially the piece that's under question is this Parcel B. So in principle, I mean, obviously they voted to... It's clear that you can subdivide out with you guys'...
Yeah, because we have a closing at 2:00 P.M. tomorrow, so I just wanted to...
So we approve the plan, and I guess condition upon the lawyer, though, right? Can you have him answer by 2:00 P.M. tomorrow?
I can, I can, I can...
Well, I mean, the subdivision to pull off Lot 2 can happen anyway, either way, it's just a matter of what the what the disposition of Parcel B and stuff has.
So I mean...
Parcel B could stay with Lot 1.
And then we can lead it to that.
I mean, we're signing this thing after we speak, so...
More wishy-washiness.
No, I mean, I think, you know, Lot 2 is approved.
Yeah, I don't think they had an issue with that.
Yeah, but the question would be, does this, does this go into Lot 2?
Or does it stay with Lot 1 as shown currently? Could stay with Lot 1, or it could go to, you know, but that doesn't, that shouldn't, that won't affect...
Oh, I was just asking if you needed any input from us that would, you know, clear that, you know?
So I mean hypothetically, if it stayed with one of those two lots, we could do this split, and then we can put in our deed restriction, that we're going to lead it to the neighbor, if it's approved by the town council.
It's already a restriction, it's all set, nothing has happened. If the town council comes back and says that Parcel B cannot go to 58 or larger in the back, then it's going to have to go with either Lot 1 or 2.
And then that's a conversation for supper time.
Well, so I guess we would need to, that would affect the closing, because that would affect what we're purchasing.
I mean, it's shown now, go with Lot 1. And attorneys will know. Wouldn't affect your, shouldn't affect your closing at all.
Yeah, okay.
It would just be later on if they say, well, we'll just put it with Lot 2.
I saw that, it was on the...
That's why I thought you were here, actually.
No, that was the funny part, it was just...
Well, that's why we were actually going to make this stuff.
It was ironic, it happened the same day.
Are you still interested in that property?
Well, not necessarily.
But yes.
Not with what they were asking for.
Because we found some brothers here.
So it was just coincidence that it happened.
Like issue.
So we are potentially, but...
So you're already in town?
No, we moved from Michigan, I'm out here at 6:00 A.M. this morning. We just love town hall meetings.
We've spent a lot of time here, actually, already.
Coincidentally, one of the other docket items is another property we were looking at.
Which, oh!
The commercial property.
In addition to, independent from this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, totally separate from the property Justice House.
Oh, oh, you're the ones who are looking at the...
The Druids' property.
Right.
Oh, the Druids' property, I had to crack a brow at somebody.
No, 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 that one.
Yeah, we just came, we came into the city building like the week we were here, I think it was like a month ago.
We were here like all day.
Yeah, we were here all day, I mean, all the people were saying hi.
So what are you thinking for that property?
Well, we had a bunch of ideas, we wanted to, well, parking is a big issue.
Of course.
There were some previous drawings that were made by, I think, the current owners, I don't know how far back it goes, they had some brethren drawn up of making that center area courtyard with some trees, benches, which I thought was a great idea, but then it even, it restricts the parking even more.
Well, so, we just passed a bylaw, a parking bylaw, that allows for off-site parking. And you, there's the parking in the back for the, for the, for the common.
Yeah, which we talked about with the other one, and...
So I think whatever plan you come forward with, the planning board would, you know, look at, I think what we say at 50%, I forget what we said, of your required...
And then we wanted to do, with that in mind, our plan was, one of the plans was to create a boardwalk from that parking lot.
If the conservation...
There's a little bit of a, and then we had to see if it was wetlands, or if it had been moved.
So that people could go to the park and the property.
And then make that barns there...
Kind of like a covered seating area for the other two businesses.
For the other two, yeah, businesses in front, so you'd have the courtyard, you'd have like a little, what's the word again?
Pavilion?
Pavilion.
But we have a pavilion there now, have you been there?
Right, yeah, yeah, we walked all around the park and stuff.
Yeah, cool. Not on our agenda, so we shouldn't...
Yeah.
But I know people would love something in those buildings.
Ice cream shop was thrown around a lot.
You have a whole public water issue, there's a lot of issues.
Yeah, that's the...
Talks about the health of... That's when the problematic property...
Too bad you weren't here a few years ago, because I know, like, the common, the owners before got transferred to the town, were open to an easement, went over a public well and stuff, but, you know, another issue for another day.
Yeah. Everybody have a good night?
Good luck with everything, I have right now.
About what? Thank you.
I think they're still discussing the property, the resign.
All right. Bylaws.
Do I have all the plans for what I'd be, including the letter?
Oh, no, I think you just took the letter.
All right. These are the rezonings you were working on?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So Erica started work on my request for a bylaw to snap the business zones to the actual lot lines. Can you talk us through these, Erica?
Yeah, sure.
This is the industrial district?
Yep, so I basically started going from east to west on 117, with me at various districts. So the first one's the industrial district. So my thought process here was, okay, we capture Paranon, we capture Cobham, the property next to Cobham, and then we also need to look at the other abutting properties that fall within the, you know, the industrial district, so in the rear, the Delaney Project property, that state property, I would say that we remove that, that doesn't necessarily need to be an industrial. And then Bolton Spring Farm, that's questionable, I mean, it is 11 acres, there is the potential for them to carve that out and do something there, so I would suggest leaving it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would have.
But everything else is residential, so that was my thought on that.
So we would turn that industrial to residential? So they look at industrial district, technically?
Oh, partially.
The zones were originally just basically so many feet from 117, and it just, there's no restrictions, say you couldn't put housing in there.
What is this, what is the 5E10A and, or 5B52, is that just the back of Anymore or something?
Well, I was looking into this, to properties in Stowe, and everything that I saw there, it's residential, so I don't see any reason to...
Behind Bolton Woods Way, is that just the...
Oh, which one?
Is that 5B52, that 15 acres?
I believe that's still residential.
Yeah, but that's connected to...
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I think it's Anymore, I think there must be Anymore. Yeah, some big house in the back of the woods there or something. So that's good. So this one isn't really that much of a concern, but yeah.
People should be happy to be moving out of the industrial. Although they might not like Bolton Spring Farm is being added to it.
Oh, it's not added.
Or not added, it's already there, so...
It just remains, yeah.
I almost, I almost think, though, maybe at town meeting, if we did this, it would open up a can of worms, so I don't know.
Well, I think what we should show at town meeting is just this area, and then this area that we would be removing, right? And we don't talk about the stuff that you're not changing, right? Just have a hatch, and just say, you know, it doesn't make sense to have this portion of residential that's in, you know, excuse me, this portion of industrial land that's in residential area, but want to remove that.
I understand, people are going to want to remove Bolton Spring Farm too, but...
And if you don't call attention to it, I think Danielle, they're never going to really know.
Yeah.
Just don't label it, don't put Bolton Spring Farm.
I did that for your purposes.
Yeah, yeah, just hatch the area that we want to...
I mean, it makes sense that way. The state property is conservation area, and you can't remove it, so...
It's really just cleaning stuff up.
Yeah, that's the whole, yeah. Yeah, that's not, you got, this looks good.
Well, look, can I ask for the state portion?
Yeah.
Why, so the state owns this?
It's conservation area back there.
Oh, it's conservation?
I believe, well, it's state-owned, though, it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that owns it.
So what does that get rezoned to?
Well, whatever, it would be residential.
Do we, I guess, does that make sense?
Is that what we do conservation land as, residential?
I don't know any, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any conservation area.
Yeah, I know.
I can leave it, if people are going to question it, we can just leave it.
That's what I was going to say, because it creates, I mean, right now, it goes, you know, right along here. I mean, I think this all completely makes sense, but this can be questioned. I just see that.
So we'll add that back in, or not add it back in, but I'll just complete that.
Next one, limited business.
This is Slater's?
This is Slaver?
This has already been defined by the parcel line, so this is like attached.
Yeah, because these are rezoned at town meeting a few years ago.
Yeah, so we're good there, and how's this one?
So this is a game property, this is where we really need to think about, you know, whether or not, particularly, you know, 4D71, whether or not, you know, that stays residential, or if that...
4D71?
The one right on the corner there.
So in the mixed-use village overlay district?
Oh, 85 and...
The piece of that property that is within the business district does get included in the overlay, so if that gets taken out of the business district, we would have to then modify the mixed-use village overlay district.
So are you suggesting for this one, this old red area, the business district?
Correct. It's like Eric was saying, it's just to clean it up.
Yeah, to clean it up, I mean, all of these lots are already, but I got you. And then you're asking, should we include this, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just what are our thoughts on that parcel, I mean, it's primarily residential.
Well, from, I remember from the discussion, I think that they were saying that they would keep that residential, it was kind of like a buffer zone for the neighborhood.
They did say that, yeah, yeah.
There's nothing, is there anything there now?
No. So with that said, we'll just have to update the mixed-use village overlay district as part of this, because that includes that little area that's business.
4D30 is what? So 4D28 is the current gas station, 4D29 is country covered, oh no, it's the White House, right?
It's the White House.
4D61 is country covered?
Must be.
Yeah, 4D30 is, oh, is that, is that undeveloped?
Yeah, that's for a game.
Is 4D33 where they talked about the gas station?
Yeah.
Well, and that's also...
But it was only like the, these, they were going to do like three acres here, they weren't going to develop all of it.
I thought they had to go farther back, though, no?
Well, they had to like, they had to like lease the whole land in order just to get those three acres, so that was... They didn't really care about the rest of the land, the gas station people.
No, they didn't, they were just doing them.
And 4D34 is that one little house right next to 495?
Is that that house, or is that house on 433? Is the house officially on 34?
I believe it's 34.
Okay.
What do they have frontage on? 495?
It's your own, you know.
A pre-existing one, I guess.
Yeah, probably.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, yeah, I mean, 495 was in the road.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Can you get road frontage?
So from what I remember, the contention about the whole supermarket, CBS, gas station development, was, I think we were trying, we were trying to do this exact same thing, but then people worried that it was too big. They, people were hesitant to give up this residential portion here into that, because then that would make the development too big. But I think this looks good to me.
I mean, out of all the partial properties where you could develop business, why not have the one right next to 495?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Allow a bigger thing to come in here.
And that's part of the mixed use, so that would all be open to business, and then...
Yeah, this is a landlocked residential, you couldn't get there anyway, really?
No, you can't, because of the 495.
Well, you put your strip mall in the front, and then have a road coming back to your apartments.
So the mixed-use village overlay line is all the way back here, right?
Mm-hmm, that follows the parcel line.
Yeah, it follows the parcel line. Yeah, so I think this is good what you have, Erica. Like you said, this little corner could go to residential.
And I think at the end of the day, once we confirm the lines that we think we want, we should probably invite the property owners in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the canes may look at that and say, wait a second, right now I have the option of doing either residential or commercial. Now, I can only do commercial, they may not...
Well, so what you could do is, you can, you can, well, you only could put residential in this back section, so I mean, if they wanted to, you could just bring the line right along here.
Well, I mean, they can always put residential in commercial areas, so...
Keep the line, you can't, you can't have residential and commercial, right?
No.
Well, if you do phosphor, then you can count all that commercial land and...
No, no, once you get done with that.
But that's not on the list.
Oh, I think it is on the list, wasn't it? Oh, that was in the subdivision rules and regs. But so I'm saying, either this, or instead of going all the way in the back, bring it along what's currently there, if it's going to be an issue. Do you know what I'm saying?
Do you want to leave, I think we should leave it like this for now.
Yeah, yeah, this is a good start. Okay.
This was a lot of like, oh...
This is the limited business district on the other side.
Yep.
So we're doing the candy store, Bolton Capital Group. So Bolton Capital Group is another one where a lot of it is residential, but to me, it makes sense to just make the whole thing limited business. We've got the Fridas property, we have Bolton Corners, we have Bolton Office Park, and then we've got the smaller businesses on the corner there, Clayton Zane Bank.
And then 4C71 through, that's all new development, right?
Yeah, so we would take that out, that would become residential.
Yep.
What's all this?
This is developing one, I'm sorry, Danielle.
Oh, that's okay.
This is, um, did it 40?
Yeah.
Yeah, Crescent Village.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Oh, I thought you were joking, like, that's the one that you drive by every day?
No, I didn't, no, it's, 4C24.
Where are you looking?
4C24 is the Bolton Office Park.
That's, oh, okay.
Senior Senator.
What's, what's behind, what's this?
That's the municipal land.
Yeah, so that was, that's my question for the part, I wasn't sure, do you want to keep that in business? Should we be taking it out, I mean, how, I don't know. And same with the property behind that, I mean, that property behind there doesn't seem all that viable, it looks like it's a landlocked parcel.
23?
Yeah.
3C23 back there?
I just, I don't know, the, um.
Does the town own that as well?
No, that's private.
We own thirty-eight.
I would probably look to, I mean, if this is town-owned land, I would almost wanna bring this line back to here. And, and the only reason for that is just, you know.
Leave it business, yeah.
Yeah, it's right next to one, uh, whatever, sorry, four ninety-five, um.
Or one seventeen, depending which one.
Yeah, that's why I said front some to those, no, 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 no. And then we can talk to the property owner of this one, if they'd be okay with it.
So I include the town property?
I would include the town, the town.
So that would include, that would include this utility use my area as well, that property wraps around.
Yeah, well, so we would talk, yeah, where, where does, where does four C thirty-eight, the, the town land rep, is that?
It wraps around up to one seventeen, so that.
Oh, includes them.
Yeah.
The gardens are up there and stuff.
Yeah, no, but, but, but going the other direction out this way.
Oh, how big is that parcel? Does it continue?
It continues, uh.
All the way to the schools, that's.
Yeah, that's, that is, so then, if our, if our goal is to have the zoning follow the lot lines, then that the treatment plan in the schools would all be limited business. We, we can stop, we can, we can stop it where it is, I mean, we don't have to go where, we don't have to be like, you know, stigmatized, make, do what makes sense, is all I'm saying.
Well, that could, I mean, this could be a different.
Yeah.
Parcel over here, and if it just, if it ends right here, just include that part, right?
Well, I think it just keeps them going, it's kinda weird, it wraps around everything.
Yeah, the whole parcel continues.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, fifty acres.
Well, so, this is where we allowed solar, the, as a right solar, right?
Yeah, that's why I think it would be good just to keep, you know, not have it, I would keep it as limited business.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
So a portion of four ninety-five is under limited business?
We can put it on our nursery.
So I'm extending that line down.
I would just extend it down to town land, just go straight down and not include.
Talk to the owner of twenty-three.
Yeah, then we gotta ask this person what they would wanna do.
No frontage though.
So it's a non-buildable lot?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. I even did the research on it, but I guess it can't build there anyway.
Then I would take the, yeah, limited business thing off. I don't know, I don't know what matters.
And then the last one, says Fordish Mill Road. Yeah, so we created that, we created that open space in the back there, so definitely clean that up and then extend it out, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got.
Yeah, it makes sense what you have. What's CB six, is that, um, most of this and stuff?
That, and.
There's the, the spa there or whatever.
Classic pizza, and then, yeah, that's exactly.
Isn't pizza a classic pizza?
I'm saying CB six.
Yeah, CB six is where the gold shop is.
Yeah, it makes sense what you have, yeah, yeah.
So CB four would be all business, a portion of it right now is.
Yeah, so you're saying it's gonna go extend down. I mean, it, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's good. So, yeah, definitely clean things up.
Eric, do you know what they're doing over by the liquor store there, on Fordish Mill?
It's like, it's.
Yeah, I do. You mean the?
Well, they're clearing stuff there.
Oh.
Back, back, back behind, behind.
Behind my house?
No, behind Dogma, yeah.
Oh, no, I don't know what they're doing there.
They just cleared out a bunch of trees in that section.
Yeah, I feel like there's always been like machinery there.
Yeah, but they actually.
Yeah, they actually used.
Several trees are gone one day, come back the next week fourteen of them.
So the stump. They definitely cleared, cleared it out.
Yeah, they, they closed it, closed it, right.
Well, so I, actually, the, the realtor for that property had come into the DNC once and they talked about.
Well, I mean, they do own that all the property there.
Well, so they, they talked that, they, they said that, you know, they talked about with the, uh, the liquor store people talked about with Classic and redeveloping that entire land.
There, there's a lot of payment there with like, you know, they could really do something, oh my god, it's ridiculous.
But there's a house right there, right?
Yeah, well, there's a house, yeah, somewhere, I figure where it is. There's a house, that house with that little deck that walks the school to.
Is that, is that that?
Maybe it's this thing right there, I don't know. But, so they, and then, you know, I told them about this newly zoned district, so, you know, I was saying, if you could pool all the owners together and figure out some type of business district and figure out the parking, of course, but it would be a good spot for something.
Lovely spot right behind the DPW.
Yeah. Well, also, the other thing with the developers, they talked about, I forget what it's called, I remember, they talked about, you know, we traded, like, gave them municipal, like, if the DPW, it doesn't make sense to have the DPW there. Um, if we moved the DPW over next to the highway in that municipal land, and that developer was willing to like pay for a maintenance shed or something over there, and then we gave them that, what the DPW land is on, as payment, kind of to move the, you know, so there's like legal precedence with towns that he was saying, to like kinda trade, trade, uh, building, uh, you know, a DPW for that land, you know, to develop that whole corner. No, no, that was like a couple of years ago, we talked about that, so it's not like anything's imminent, but there's possibilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so next, uh, so I think that's good, you're on the right track.
Yeah.
Yeah. One building per lot, okay, so you just.
I just highlighted where it's, you know, stated in the bylaw.
Yeah.
So are we looking at, you know, I, I just need a little more direction, are we looking at business, limited business and industrial, are we talking only industrial?
Definitely limited business, cuz I want the limited business and business.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, why not industrial too?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if it makes sense to have, you know.
Wow.
Oh, boy, that is a loud cricket.
Is that a cricket? Is the door open?
I think it is up.
The door shut and everything.
Oh, the door was shut, okay.
A loud cricket, oh, no.
All right, so it's for limited business.
So, so the other uses is the limited business business, is that?
That's, yeah.
So that's what's in question?
Yeah, so it would be number two, that we would update.
Yeah, not more than a single principal building regardless of use should be erected, yeah, so how do we wanna word it, just multiple buildings, you know, by design?
By, by special permit?
By special permit, yeah, or something. As part of design and, you know, I don't know, however you wanna, however it needs, it needs to be worded. It doesn't make sense to have a, you know, fifty thousand square foot single building.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, you guys are gonna be, this is yet, all, all day tomorrow, I guess I'll stop during the day.
So just another question, does this in any way undercut the mixed-use village overlay district? Because I feel like that was the whole, like, I don't know, that was part of the, our whole presentation for the, for the mixed-use village.
I don't think it undercuts it, this just allows something else.
That allows residential.
And you get, well, and you get, you get the twenty to twenty-five percent bonus to push, add residential, so I think it's still.
Yeah, no, I think it's still okay.
Yeah, this is sort of having one big strip mall, you can have several, you can have a couple of different smaller buildings.
Cricket.
I'm just wondering if we should probably be looking at like, if we should do another spatial analysis to see if like, limited business and business parcels can even support more than one building? Because they were pretty tight beginning life.
But we're now to thirty, what is it, twenty, sorry, twenty percent?
I think, I think, I don't know that we have to do with, I don't know, I think we just save, allow multiple buildings by permit, special permit.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, I mean, if, you know, if, if somebody wants to develop, you know, the, uh, you know, behind the free dis property and it makes sense that, you know, they, you know, something like, you know, they want a restaurant and a drugstore or something.
Yeah.
You know, you don't necessarily want those together, you know, but, you know, but that doesn't, you know, they can still get, like I said, you still have the bonus density for, for the rest, you know, for mixed use.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I think that's an easy one.
Easy for us, huh?
Yeah.
Plus, plus if the easy ones are in the.
Yeah, what I'll also do too is I'll do a search for our bylaw to see if the one building comes up, you know, it could already walk up in other bylaws that we're gonna have to handle as well.
Yeah. So, well, it's going over, yeah, so Article five, oh, so this is the Littleton, um, bylaw, which I think is basically the direction we should go, and then, and what they did, we've talked, in order to get credit for the affordable, you can't have age restriction.
Yeah.
So they have an over fifty-five housing development that doesn't restrict age. Uh, basically, you just design it for seniors, and if you build it, it will come type, you know, little studio, you know, maybe one-bedroom type places. I mean, I think, I think, you know, we go for like a Bolton Manor type place, you know? Rentals, hundred percent affordable, maybe it could be a single, you know, allow single floor, two stories, um. I mean, even if they wanna be like little single pads, I think that's fine too, but just keep the size like no bigger than eight hundred or a thousand square feet or something. You know, maybe eight hundred, I'd almost, I'd almost say eight hundred and limit it to one bedroom. You know, there's a single bedroom, senior housing need to be bigger than eight hundred square feet. I lived in an apartment for many years that was maybe six hundred or seven hundred square feet, or two bedrooms, so. For eighteen years.
Well, this one's allowing up to twenty-five hundred square feet.
Well, for, for. This, this has, this has multiple.
Also for retail, where?
Yeah, I don't see where it lists the size of the.
I was trying to find that, am I missing it?
Um, so they have the independent, the living units, and assisted, this is like a bunch of different things, it's the cottage dwellings, two-family dwellings, house dwellings. I mean, this isn't our bylaw, this is just something Littleton did.
I mean, did we wanna do something as encompassing as this?
No, I don't wanna do something as big as this. I kinda, that's what I was saying, I almost kinda wanna just focus on, you know, what they cover. So this is kind of like their cottage overlay, except they added like rental.
Where's the rental? Where's the small, am I missing it?
Independent living units.
Yeah, where do they?
Age-appropriate land, all the.
I didn't read every word of this, I don't know. Oh, there's def, there's definitions in the back. Independent living, multifamily building.
Yeah, that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't.
Multifamily building, a multifamily building, so kinda like the Bolton Manor, and a senior residential development that are designed and intended for occupancy principally by the people aged five or older, with units that included some basic services such as meals.
All right, so I see where.
In common areas.
So, so Littleton is basically saying, in this district, they're allowing cottage dwellings, two-family dwellings, townhouses, independent living, assisted living, you're saying you wanna just allow independent living?
Yeah, pretty much.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't wanna allow this one, all of those stuff?
I just, I, I mean, we can allow, and I don't wanna really call it independent living, um, I almost, I almost, it could technically be called apartments, you know?
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't think independent living units are apartments.
No, I mean, apartments fall more under dwelling, multifamily, but even then.
I'm trying to do something that's like apartments, but we don't call it apartments. For marketing purposes.
I mean, in the over fifty-five, so independent, if you can have a building, I designed a building once, it had independent, um, living, assisted living, and then, um, it was like a full-time care, um, after that, so independent is designed for seniors, but that can independently live on their, their own, it's not necessarily apartments, I guess.
Well, so my wife's grandmother stayed at a place in Framingham, I forget the name of it, but it was pretty much nothing, it wasn't bigger than this, it was, you walk in, there's a little kitchenette, there's a bedroom, there's like a little corner to sit in, and a bathroom. That's what I, that's what I envisioned, just a bunch of those.
I just, I wanna be careful of, again, not, since we don't, you know, I'm not an architect or anything, so I don't design any of the interiors of this stuff, of, um, I mean, I, you know, this one example doesn't have, uh, limitation on the square footage, so.
But that was our big problem.
Where? Cottage dwelling, detached one-family dwelling that's not at C at eighteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
That's a familiar number. Isn't that, oh, no, we had twenty, twenty-four hundred, I'm even seeing twelve hundred or a thousand.
But that's where, I mean, I just wanna be careful, we're, we're throwing numbers around, but.
I mean, what, what do you want? Do you want another Bolton Manor? Is that the goal?
Yeah.
Does Bolton Manor count towards our affordable housing right now?
Yeah, it does.
Twenty percent.
Yeah. I want another Bolton Manor, but that.
Will that get us enough, I mean, does that get us enough?
I mean, it probably won't get us to ten percent, but it'll make a big enough chunk, and if our plan is in there, then we'll have, you know.
We're showing, we're going towards.
Yeah. Well, yeah, so we add a bunch of affordable, we add something that's needed, which is senior housing is needed, affordable senior housing.
I guess, I just, I mean, I like this and the fact that it just gives options. Um, I like the fact it gives a cottage dwelling, a townhouse dwelling, independent living, assisted living.
I was really trying to narrow it down somehow.
I like the options.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, I'm.
I agree, I was just, I was just trying to make it easier for us to pass.
I, I guess what I was thinking, I'm just thinking in the back of the mind of the developer, and, you know, we had that meeting, which, by the way, I actually am signed up to go to the, um.
I haven't signed up, but I'm definitely gonna go.
Oh, that's Wednesday.
It's next Wednesday, I sent an email, I said I was gonna, I'm gonna try, so far I still have.
Do you have to officially register to go?
You do have to, right now, and we were concerned because the attendance is really low at this point, so if you think you're gonna go, definitely email her.
This thing was not many spots.
No, no, like, you just didn't get a lot of people responding.
It's a tough time to do it.
Yeah, oh, it's middle of the day, I know, and I gotta drive out there.
But I work in Chalford, so it's actually not that bad.
It's in me.
Well, I'm in Westford, so.
It's in Devon's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not that bad.
Yeah, so, yeah, cuz I'm in Westford, so it's like twenty minutes.
Yeah, shoot down for lunch.
I'm just gonna tell my boss when to get some lunch, so, but I did sign up, cuz I, my thought was I wanted to go to, went to get some.
Cuz Mark O'Hagan's gonna.
He's gonna be on the panel, yeah.
And that's where we'll know, like, what, you know, and we can ask them, you know, will you build this, you know?
I think the only thing about having a comprehensive one that would be good is it would look like we're, we're making an effort to senior housing, whereas if you're just trying to zone another Bolton Manor, do we just, do we just get, do we just get the same complaints about density and water usage and all that?
Well, I mean, I don't stand, I'm narrowing it down, I don't understand what you're saying.
That if you had something that's broader than saying, we're trying to tackle the issue of affordable senior housing in town.
And we're providing options for the developers to, you know.
And it's like, if you're voting against it, you're voting against the seniors.
Yeah, yeah, that's how I wanna, that's how I wanna hear this. That's exactly what I wanna say, everybody that comes up, I wanna be like, so you hate seniors.
So what you're saying?
So so-and-so from so-and-so street, seniors, man?
I, for now, I would say, let's, let's use this as a group.
I'll agree with it, and.
Yeah.
Uh, well, it's, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be the one building, like Manor, like I said, it could be flats or whatever, but, you know, I think we should definitely limit the size to twelve hundred, fourteen hundred. I, I almost think we should limit to, I think we should limit it to one bedroom, maybe some percentage to two bedrooms. But what you're trying to do is, from the article I read, I don't know if it was this one or one of the ones in the other townness, you're trying to make something that's attracting seniors, but you're not really necessarily.
No, I get that, I totally, I totally get that, but, um, I, I mean, I just have a bunch of questions, I mean, that I don't have the answer to, I mean, would seniors really want a two-bedroom? I, I don't know, um, like, I don't have the answer to that question, I mean, would seniors really want just a one-bedroom? Would seniors be okay with a thousand square feet, would, you know, or would they want a larger, so.
Can we get, um, somebody from the council on aging to come to our next meeting?
Well, the other thing I could do too is, um, I could go to one of their, like, when they do like the, um, lunches with the seniors or whatever, I could go to one of those and put together a survey and have him fill out the survey for you.
That'd be great.
I'm, I'm happy to do that, in the way we're hearing directly from them.
Yeah.
I get that discussion here too.
Cuz I mean, there's two things, there's one, yeah, there's one, hearing from the seniors, and then one we would hear from the developers too, and kind of what they need to do, but um, the more information we can get, I.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I mean, the Bolton Manor is only gonna attract probably the, up the older age, right? It's not gonna be younger seniors that wanna move into.
I mean, but, so, we had Ada, whatever her name, Ada Wilson?
Yeah.
We had a bunch of seniors that, and I've had Linda King come to me, I've had a bunch of seniors come to me, um, saying exactly what I've been saying, is like, okay, this cottage overlay is nice, but it's not for seniors, it's like, it's, you know, we want, we.
No, we need something for seniors, yeah.
We want a smaller apartment that we can rent that's actually, is. We want a smaller apartment that we can rent that's actually, is actually affordable. You know, that's not gonna cost four hundred thousand, they wanna be able to rent something that's affordable, and if, we can't let it get too big because, you know.
They just want to take care of the stuff.
Yeah. And if somebody out of school wants to move in, that's fine too, you know, we're not restricting ages. You know, if you wanna live in a studio or a one-bedroom, or if we have two bedrooms, you know.
No, I mean, I, I think it's all on the table, I guess if we can get a little bit more information, then we can narrow it down a little bit. I, I just, I liked the options, but if we wanna slash it away a little bit, that's fine too.
So then the other two big questions are, first of all, I know Mike's brought this up to me a bunch of times, is we have to address water somehow. In this one, and I, we looked at one in Ranby and one in, who's another town, I forget.
Hadley?
Hadley.
Yeah, I should, um, I don't know if that was in my zoning, like, in our, whatever bylaws at the last town meeting, and I'll look at the questions.
Yeah.
Cause I go.
Half of them are water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember writing down some questions that we wanted to.
So those, all three of them say, it might even say in here, uh, could be anywhere as long as there's access to public water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Littleton has public water.
They created her public water, yeah.
Those have public water, so.
So, but what we have to do is, since we can't do that, we have to say, require some water study.
Well, so does, does Harvard have, I mean, what other towns that are solely, I mean, Harvard's solely wells.
Yeah, so we should look at that.
Does Harvard have um, assisted living, or senior, senior living? Um.
Oh, yellow board.
I mean, we, we really gotta look at a couple towns that are wells only, and what do they have?
I know Stowe has it, but.
But Stowe has water, don't they?
Parts of town, like everywhere, not everywhere, I don't think.
Well, so Boxborough, Boxborough's just that huge development, and they're probably, I mean, they're probably got water, right?
Yeah, it's like two hundred and sixty-something.
Can we look to see what they're?
Oh, that paddock.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the one behind the gas station.
Paddock is. Yeah.
Can we see what that is? Is it like all ages, I assume, or what's this only?
Yeah, it's all ages, it's a, it was a, I believe it was a forty-B. Um, there are a percentage that are affordable, but a hundred percent of the units count towards their S H I. I actually just emailed the town planner about it the other day, yeah.
Cause they're all rentals. Wow. And see, can we see, can we find out what they did for water and certain stuff?
I can ask them.
If they have like a treatment plan.
Sure they do, but yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're all.
Yeah, so we can find that out. Um, we'll talk to the council on the, oh, so water, so we have to address that somehow, we can't, we can't, we, I don't think we even mentioned it in the last bylaw. So, you know, even just like studies required, flow, whatever, whatever needs to be there. Some acronyms. Put them in a definition section.
Well, I mean, bottom line, no matter what you do, you, I mean, if you're, I said that ten thousand, you're Board of Health, if you're over, or sorry, ten or fifteen, I can't remember now.
Ten.
Ten, right? And then if you're over ten thousand, it's D E P. I mean, it's all, there's regulations governing everything.
But we definitely have to just wording it in there.
Yeah, if it's a public water supply, you know, if it meets that definition, there's.
There's D E P guidelines, there's a ground one injection control, you know, permit, I mean, there's multiple permits.
This is the kind of stuff I want.
That.
Where were you at the last town meeting?
I was there, I just.
Why weren't you at the last town meeting? Groundwater flaw.
All I had to say was groundwater injection control. Everything would have passed. That's what G I C, G I C, groundwater injection control.
Um, it's, well, the, the permit is a U I C, it's an underground injection control permit, it's U I C. But um, it's, you need to get it for any classified wells, or actually any wells.
This is the kind of good stuff we need in there.
So, I, I don't do those permits, I just know you need one, so if anyone asks me specifics, I won't be on the end of it.
That's the good stuff. So, and then the other thing is where do we put it? I know Erica said, do we wanna do a bylaw, or do we wanna just do like a development plan with a, you know, developer? Then you have to go the Z B A route? I think I'd rather get it on the books, get the town on board. Even if we allow, can we allow things in municipal land? Well, we do, cause we allow the solar, right? So we can allow municipal land, or, I don't know, if we have like, I don't know what residential land, if we wanna narrow the scope, cause we said any parcel over ten acres.
Was that problematic last time? People didn't like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, people don't like it.
Everyone was poisoned by Sugar Road, basically. Everyone got up and said, you wanna build it on the Sugar Road.
Yeah, yeah, everywhere, yeah. Up a Sugar Road and take a lot of water.
Well, I think part of, and, and I get everyone's concern, I mean, you know, we all have wells, we all don't want anything, especially along Main Street, you have potentially shallow wells, so you really wanna be careful of, you know, what's going in around it, but um, you know, I mean, they, they've gotta do all the studies, they've gotta do all the, you know, calculations to figure where groundwater is and how much withdrawal they're gonna have, um, and get it permitted. I just don't know the specifics of that, so maybe we.
Yeah, I don't remember public water supply development, if there's, there may already be flow testing and.
So we need to have a lot of section in this bylaw saying all that stuff.
I mean, I don't think it needs to be in the bylaw, it just.
I think it does.
Reference, or at least we need to be able to speak to it.
I think we need to speak to, I think what we need to get is a complete understanding, and maybe I can try to look it up, is what are all the different permits that would need to be required, yeah, so anything.
This development is required to meet so-and-so standard.
Yeah, like anything above a certain acreage, um, you're gonna trigger a permit from D E P. And D E P is gonna make, make you look at this, 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 and this, and so I'll see if I can find out.
However, we do it, it needs to be addressed. And then it's the location, municipal, or where we wanna, that's a big question, where we wanna put it.
And actually, Brandon might even be able to help us out, cause I mean, he's, does private, you know, private well, he probably does, doesn't do the big public water supply wells. No, they did one public water supply well behind Country Cupboard. There was gonna be a public water supply.
There's, yeah, there's a couple of public wells back there, I think.
Yeah. But there was a new one proposed.
Oh, I mean, C M E, C M E is a.
Yeah.
Public water supply.
Um.
But I don't, I don't remember what, what.
It's not just, well, but that's like for Board of Health, but then people are worried beyond that, like, you know, a building.
No, but that's what I'm saying, once it gets to a certain with water withdrawal, you have to have um, a D E P permit.
And that proves that you're not like withdrawing too much of whatever the offer is.
Yeah, you need, you need to do um, study, a groundwater study. Basically, um, you know, you put a bunch of monitoring wells, and you figure out what groundwater is, and you, you see where it is, like in certain times of years, and then you do a study.
And is that like, is that like such an expensive process that it would?
Well, it's just, I mean, it's.
It would certainly, it definitely adds costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if anything that triggers it, it's a part no matter what.
But I'm saying it will be required.
I mean, once you get to a large enough development where you need a large well, um, you've gotta do it.
You gotta do it anyway.
It's just part of the requirement, so I think.
Yeah, so we didn't address that at all in the cottage dwelling.
Yeah, um.
She's saying we don't need to.
We don't need to, but I think you need to do the reference.
I think we need to have the information.
To understand like what the size of a development is that triggers that, would be beautiful to me.
That's what I think, yeah. So I'll see if I can find the.
I couldn't answer to any of that.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find the, um, I've looked at some of the public water supply wells by D E P that, I don't design them, so. I'll see what I can find out.
Okay. And as I said, you know, I would love if it was, because these fortyBs are twenty-five percent affordable, they don't really help us at all, so I would love if we can get this to be one hundred percent affordable. And, and have it recorded as a fourth.
Okay, so next one.
Cottage dwelling, what's this here?
Yeah, if you can find out, like, one in Boxborough, what permits they needed to get, that would be, yeah, cause then once we know a purpose, I can do the research on what's required and stuff like that.
So we talked about senior housing, oh, stormwater.
I need to draft something out, I haven't done that.
There's nothing here for stormwater, right?
No, I mean, I'm happy to, but I don't know if doing that.
Oh, if you wanna start it?
No, I, I have no problem doing that.
That, that would be great, my, my main thing is I just want it to, um, one, we should say it needs to follow the state, which we state mast, uh, stormwater standards, um, but in addition to that, we wanna meet the peak rate in probably. And that's, that's really the simplicity of it.
So then for major residential districts, we're just adding it up for design review board?
Yeah, that's a little more complicated than I personally was thinking, because.
It's just two words?
With a big question mark. Um, the, the design review criteria that's been established in our bylaw really is for commercial, so we would have to go through and create a whole new design review criteria for residential.
But what are they doing for um, for fortyB? I mean, they're reviewing that.
Well, that's just as a courtesy, I asked them for those.
Yeah, they can't, they did not need to come in front of us, and they just came.
Yeah. So if we wanna actually put it in as a bylaw, we need to have criteria for them to follow.
We can't say that.
I wish we could do, it's just, we have to generate it, it's, you know, I can't.
So, yeah, cause everything, all the definitions are for like kind of commercial.
For commercial, yeah.
So, what are we asking design review to be triggered is for?
Major residential.
Major residential, which is what, more than four houses?
Um, more than five.
More than five.
So it's not just two words.
Yeah, I wish. Initially, I thought it was going to be, I thought it was just, you know, playing board, triggered design review boards, but it has to be more than that.
And what do we want that for, like, is there an example?
That's what I was trying to figure out, maybe.
Of a residential development that.
Well, for example, like Heath Farm.
Oh, okay.
You know, now it's questionable what those houses are gonna look like, it would have been nice to be able to have some control.
He's, he's known as cookie cutter.
But presumably, they're, I mean, they're gonna build what sells, right? I mean, they're not gonna.
It's just, well, I mean, business zone, I mean, they'll just build what sells too, but do you want it to have an aesthetic?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Yeah. And there's a lot, I mean, I mean, if he, if he's gonna build, you know, basically one, one house and just, you know, stamp it out however many times, then, you know, that, that doesn't really, you know, it's, doesn't make for anything very attractive, but, you know, if it's a popular floor plan, he'll sell them.
But they'll be the same.
But they'll be the same.
It's like you, you have, yeah.
And the development I grew up in, the developer had a rule that the same floor plan couldn't be closer than every three or four houses. So they, you know, it actually forced some, some, you know, different styles, some different, you know, although it was weird when you walked into a neighbor's house and it was the exact same.
Exact same.
Yeah. But it, but it did kind of mix it up and give you that, you know, it's holding fine like that. The one off of Sugar Road there. Are they all the same? Yeah, they kinda.
They kinda look the same.
Kinda look the same, right? Yeah, I mean, I mean, to a, to a certain degree, when you get a, a, you know, three-thousand-foot colonial, they all tend to. So much you can do with it. Yeah.
I mean, you're not adding like pillars.
Yeah, they, they'll spec it out to a certain one, and it's, but you're not making any money when the design changes and the inside finishes and everything else like that, yeah.
Well, you look at kettle hole facts, right, and those are all different. So I guess just, I don't know, if it looks like it's open, put big.
I, I can certainly, we can put this on the back burner and not do it this year, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I think it could be a hindrance to development too, so we need to think about that, you know, this may be an added cost.
Maybe have, maybe have, could you send Michelle an email to see what she thinks?
See what her thoughts are, sure.
Maybe, maybe she doesn't think it's necessary, just see what she thinks. Well, we have a designer review board right here.
Well, but she's an architect, so it'd be better actually to get her thinking it.
Uh, I think that's it, right? With those, so we have minutes?
Well, we have rezoning Cracker Barrel on.
Oh, so Erica's need to add that back to the list, right?
Yeah, I did ask you to add that, it's a fight. I wanna fight.
Rezoning Cracker Barrel.
So, that's, so the Juror Property, seven-eleven, seven thirteen main, which these people here are talking about is, when you're looking at the common, it's the, what was, um, the antique store, the.
Okay.
Decaying barns, and then that, and the red.
The old antique store.
Oh, oh, but we did, we, we had the neighbors come in and say, absolutely, that ain't one.
Right, but we counted out to, you know, a couple of neighbors.
Okay.
As opposed to this farm, oh. What'd she watch here?
I have things that I'm interested in here. Some things I'll decide with the residents, you know.
So, you, um, I mean, just to potentially help you out here, I mean, this could go along with our rezoning, I know, not to muddy the waters, you might love it.
We can put it right on there.
I, I mean, just like, just slip it in.
Page forward live.
Along with this, and, and basically stay, you know.
And hit another page, yeah.
Although you probably wanted a separate article in case they knocked this one thing down.
That's true, yeah, probably. Um, so, and it would be that, and it would be the Cracker Barrel.
I mean, the reasons, I can't remember.
The arguments, arguments for it would be is, you know.
It allows them.
There's, there's surety to a new owner that, yeah, this is a business, you don't have to go before the Z B A who could, or could not allow what you wanna do. So you have a limited scope of what you can do, and if, you know, if, if you don't do anything for a couple of years, it reverts to residential, and it could never be business again, you know, pretty much. It's only business now because of pre-existing non-performing, uh, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, they've always been businesses, it makes sense for them to be businesses, you know.
And not limited business?
Well, limited business, whatever.
Okay, okay, sorry. So it's residential now, but they've had businesses in it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And to, I mean, do we have any of the owners of seven-eleven, seven thirteen asking this?
Um, no, there's nobody begging for it, but.
I thought the owner of Cracker Barrel asked for it.
Yeah, I mean, he said it would be nice, right?
Was the owner or a potential liar?
No, it was the owner. I had brought it up to him, he thought it was a great idea, but he didn't ask for it, he didn't, he'll come, see us out and do it.
Yeah. I just think it would be good, you know, I think they should be businesses, and I don't know if the board isn't for it, then that's fine too, but.
I'm, I'm for it, but, I mean, we got pushback, we're gonna get pushback.
No, we will, the main resident, Main Street residents.
Well, can we have, um, the owners of these two properties, I mean, potentially say?
Well, so, they're, they're both at for sale, you know, right? Yeah, they're both on the market. They, they were nothing, you know.
So the residents' concern, I'm trying to remember this, they don't want that because they don't want those potentially to be actual businesses?
No, it's the slippery slope argument of, of other owners will then ask for their houses to, and then Main Street becomes the business street.
Gotcha, I gotcha.
Yeah. That's the main argument.
Pretty much.
They were also had an argument like.
But there's a precedence.
Residents, residences take better care of the property, so.
But there's precedence here, that these have been businesses, so.
Yes, that was a rich point.
Yeah.
So I think we should.
I'm, I mean.
I think we should.
If you wanna make the fight.
We should get up and get tomatoes thrown at them.
You can present that argument.
The majority, you know, so, the minority is the people right around it, and I don't see how it makes anything worse than what it is now. If anything.
It would be good if we could have the owners give their input of the fact that they would be for this, it would help them.
Well, so you heard what they said, they were talking about having, I don't know, they can't, they don't have the water, but it sounded like they were talking about having metering or shops or.
But no, but if we, we got a letter from them saying they would really be in support, so that we have something to stand behind as, we're not just doing this on a whim. Now, this is something, we're two properties, where we've got owners that have been past businesses, the owners are behind this.
I mean, I don't even think that was their objection, like, no one's objecting that they were always businesses. I mean, they, they said that, yeah, they're businesses, but the parking's terrible, so you can't really have a viable business there. But it was really the slippery slope argument, is what they objected to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Some, some people have home businesses, and then they'll want them, those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rezone so that they can improve their saleability and.
I mean, it would be up to the town, it wouldn't be up to us, we'd have to put it before the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like we can just magically do it. I think with the parking concerns that you bring up, what we did last year, you know, definitely opened up.
It, it, yeah.
It opened it up, you know, I'm not saying we're conquered, but, you know, all those buildings don't have.
It gives flexibility.
Adequate, it gives us flexibility to have parking off-site.
They're not, yeah. Yeah, yeah, let's do it then, that's fine.
Yeah.
We're worse than heck, when Erica's running out of town.
As my wife always says, just don't get a rock through our window, please.
Okay.
She's also scared that, Connor, you know, kids will lose friends or something. Have limited play days.
You know, the six-year-olds are really heavy on the town.
I know.
It's not the six-year-old who bring the kids to the play days. Anyway, so we have minutes here.
Yeah.
Oh, whoops, sorry.
So this is from September twenty-sixth, which is last meeting. Good to be.
Do we need a motion to accept them?
Yes.
We do, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the planning board minutes from September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
On second?
On paper?
Aye.
Great, yes, that's.
I move your turn.
I'll second.
On paper?
Aye.
Alright.